I now call to order the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six P. M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America, and to the Republic which extends one nation under God, in his world with liberty and justice throughout.
Ms. Clerk, may you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. Okay. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item B one?
An executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for F I to discuss personal matters concerning the town administrator under circumstances where the town administrator has not requested an open meeting. As required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, two D point five, two A and two E, the executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move to enter executive session.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here. Yes, sorry.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. For the public, the board is now entering executive session. Members of the public in person will be asked to leave, and all Zoom users will be sent back to the waiting room, and the virtual meeting will reopen after the executive session. And once we're done, you guys can come back in. Are you guys ready?
Yes.
Okay, we are now at the portion for public comment. Members of the public wishing to make a comment, approach the podium, state your name for the record, sign it at the sheet behind table, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. And this is on non-agenda items. Okay. No, no public comment? Onto action items. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item D one?
Resolution number fifty dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. And Ms. Patty Garcia, the town administrator, and Mr. Nick Redavid, our finance director and town treasurer, will present on this item.
Hi, thank you, Patty Garcia, town administrator. Thank you so much tonight for meeting, the meeting tonight and the budget discussion. It has been through several renditions over the last several months. This has been a labor of love by all of us, the Board of Trustees and town staff as well. This will really be the Nick Redavid show, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to him. He will be doing the presentation on the next three items, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and trustees, and thank you for the introduction, Ms. Garcia. For consideration tonight, we are proud to bring the budget of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six for the town of Wellington, Colorado. Budget development season began in May with the Board of Trustees' two thousand and twenty-six Budget Priorities Work Session and came back to the board on September sixteenth, September thirtieth, October fourteenth, October twenty-eighth. It engaged the public at the Budget Boonanza on October twenty-first and the Finance Advisory Board on October twenty-seventh. It's involved countless hours from the town administrator's office, finance department, and department leadership and staff across the organization. The three agenda items for consideration ensure that the essential services are provided and long-term investments are made to meet the needs and expectations of our community of today and tomorrow. Resolution number fifty dash two thousand and twenty-five adopts the budget of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. The town of Wellington budgets at the fund level, so each of the town's six funds and the combined trust funds are represented. Projected revenues from taxes, utility sales, transfers, loan proceeds, grants, and more of approximately twenty-eight million dollars bring the estimated revenue and funds available to sixty-four million in total. Capital investment, impact fee, and user fees in the enterprise funds have been projected using the approved two thousand and twenty-five water, wastewater, and stormwater fees, impact fees, and capital investment fees. Conservative budgeting practices to estimate lower revenue using previously approved rates ensure expenditures and fund balance requirements are met in two thousand and twenty-six while all municipal utility rates and fees are currently under study. The study results will be presented to the board in December, effective in April, and only updated once annually for residents going forward. Overall, spending estimates by the town in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six are thirty-six point eight million dollars, with fifteen point five million being invested in capital projects. One important note to make is there is an adjustment in the water fund's estimated beginning fund balance following the last presentation of the board. Loan proceeds of three point three million dollars received in two thousand and twenty-four and accrued to two thousand and twenty-three by auditors in the audited financial statements of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three were included in the unaudited financial data of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four used in budget spreadsheet calculations. This is now updated and will be resolved once the audit is complete. And since I know it's of importance, a quick update on the audit of financial statements of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. I spoke with Jim Hinkle of Hinkle and Company on Friday, November seventh, and received further directions from him last Thursday. Testing is continuing, and we are working to schedule a site visit in the next two to three weeks. There is a requirement to complete a single audit as well as federal grants were exhausted for the water treatment facility in two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Hinkle believes we are on track for audit completion by the end of the month or early December. Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-five levies the necessary property taxes required to meet costs for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. Once again, the town will be levying twelve point four three nine mils with estimated assessment valuation of one hundred and seventy-six point three million dollars according to Laramore County Assessor. This will generate nearly two point two million dollars in property tax revenue for the town. And finally, ordinance number sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five appropriates the thirty-six point eight million in expenditures and expenses adopted by the budget resolution. Each of the town's six funds are again represented, and spending is broken down into operating, capital improvements, and debt service expenses. It's exciting to note there is no debt service in the park fund in two thousand and twenty-six as the bank loan for Wellington Community Park will be paid in full next month. Additionally, since the water treatment facility was completed under budget, debt service interest payments in the water fund have been reduced to reflect additional credits received in two thousand and twenty-six following loan closeout. Appropriations are reflected throughout the budget book by line item in departments and funds and have been painstakingly refined to be as accurate and fiscally responsible as possible. Appropriations again are made at the fund level and will carry out the operations and capital projects necessary for the community. I do want to bring attention to two components of the budget book. First, the two thousand and twenty-six Town Administrator's Budget Message includes an overview of the two thousand and twenty-six estimated fund balance, budget highlights, and budget philosophy. It also lists the updates made during the budget development process to expenditures for two thousand and twenty-six. This board and staff made several tough decisions in ensuring the budget of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six carries out the board's mission, vision, and strategic plan for next year, which has been captured here. As promised, staff will bring important topics back to the board mid-two thousand and twenty-six for further funding review. These include an additional SRO position for LCSO following, excuse me, after PSD's budget adoption, and the town's hiring freeze impacting the new Parks Technician Two position and existing Public Works Administration vacancies. Second, a new consolidated financial statement has been added to the fund balance. Feedback from the Finance Advisory Board and the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award notes for last year's submission led to the development and inclusion of this new and interesting way to view the revenues and expenditures for the town. Personally, this was a lot of fun to put together. I nerded out. And I think it provides a great high-level view of the town's overall budget allocations. While financial data in the budget book will not change from what you see tonight, including the adopted budget, mill levy, and appropriations, there may be some updates to the content of the budget book and an effort to provide a clean, clear, and accurate story of the town. We know of updates to staffing and town clerk information as well as correcting the organizational chart to include the dotted lines from the board to the town clerk and town treasurer positions, for example. If adopted tonight, the budget book will be printed in the coming weeks, posted to the town's website, and submitted for GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award Consideration. The town has received this award for the budgets of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, and we believe we have a three-peat on our hands. Thank you for your support and guidance over the past several months in this budget development process. While this presentation is intended for all three agenda items, Town Administrator Garcia and I will be available during each item for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item?
Just a quick question, and I already know the answer, I believe. The mill that we are assessing, real estate, it has not changed. It is the same as what we had last year, and you know what the previous years were by chance?
By knowledge, I don't know when it became this, but it hasn't changed since it was.
But there's no increase.
Correct. No increase.
Thank you, sir. No further questions from the board? Any comments from the public on this item? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to adopt Resolution number fifty dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you. Any final comments or direction from the board before we do the vote? All I got to say is, this was an incredible document. It looks great. It gets better and better every year, so thank you so much for your due diligence and staff as a whole for all the late hours and working on this and making sure we have something good to go off of. So I really appreciate it from all of you. All right, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item D two?
Resolution number fifty-one dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution levying property taxes for the year two thousand and twenty-five to help defray the cost of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. And then Mr. Redavid will present on this item. Or I guess we don't really.
Now, he, the entire presentation was already given, so if you just want to go through these resolution and the ordinance, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Perfect. Any questions from the board on this item? No. Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? No. Uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number fifty-one dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution levying property taxes for the year two thousand and twenty-five to help defray the cost of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you. Any final comments, questions? Nope. All right. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item D three?
Ordinance numbers sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this item? No. Any comments from the public on this item? No. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Go ahead, please.
No, you've got.
No, 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 that's a big mouthful. I don't want to do that again.
I move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January two thousand and twenty-six and ending the last day of December two thousand and twenty-six.
Second. You got it. Uh, yep, seconded by Mayor Proton. He's the quickest gun in the West, I hear. Okay. Any final comments from the board on this item? No. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item D four?
Resolution number fifty-two dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution by the town of Wellington, Colorado authorizing staff to acquire certain properties needed to complete the Cleveland Avenue Improvement Project.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Bob Dowing, the Director of Public Works, will present on this item.
Evening. Good evening, mayor and trustees. Steaming along tonight, seems like. I'd have more time to prepare back there.
You're all good.
So. Okay, we're ready to go. So in your package, you have some kind of description in the, in the front there. I won't go through that or read that to you, but in general, I'll just say that we're here to ask the board to authorize us to proceed with the right-of-way acquisition process for the project. And maybe we'll, with that, we're this close, and we hope to get this close here real quick. So this little brief presentation that we've got for you, mostly an update on the project. This first slide is just kind of a recap of where we've been. Everybody knows most of this. We've got four point four 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 million dollars in grants through CDOT from five different funding sources. We executed an IGA with CDOT back at the end of twenty-three and subsequently awarded an engineering contract and have begun the right-of-way process. And I think some of y'all will remember that discussion about the right-of-way process that we had a while back. I won't go into the details, but I know, I certainly learned that that is a very involved and detailed process, and you have to follow it step by step. And luckily, we are done with almost all the steps. We've completed the right-of-way plans, the clearances, environmental clearances, especially, there's also architectural clearances and things of that sort. The notices of intent, which is official letters saying we'd like to purchase some property from you for the, for the public good. The appraisals, we had our appraisals, and then the property owners were allowed to get their own appraisers if they wished, and I believe that four of them did that. So we have basically two appraisals for every fee purchase, right-of-way purchase that we're looking at. And those were, you know, in some cases, our appraisal was a little bit high, and some, really ours was higher in almost all cases, which makes me wonder about the appraiser. But all good. And of course, those go to CDOT for issuance of a fair market value, which we've got those in hand. And once you have that, you can send out a memorandum of agreement, which is basically a purchase agreement that references the fair market value, has some other factors in there, and it's just basically our offer. And it comes with a kind of an offer packet. All those have been sent out already. So the current status is that now that we've received, so basically that agreement, we, we sign it, the property owner signs it, some discussion before that happens on, on every case. But we've got most of those in hand. I think I put in the, this presentation that we have two signed MOAs and the associated temporary construction easements, that's the TCEs. And one was in the mail. I had to put that in there because that's what I was told. I thought that was funny. And sure enough, it was in the mail because we've gotten that. So we've gotten three, and we're just right there in terms of finalizing the, the last one. And when I say the last one, I mean the four right-of-way purchases. You have five temporary construction easements, so there's one property where all we need is the TCE on that property. We're pretty much agreed on price for that last one that's still pending. There's a little detail with the relocation, an improvement relocation thing that we have to do. There's a separate CDOT permit for that, of course, so we have to pursue that as well. So we're hoping to get that done here any day now. So this is the point where we are ready to close on three of these properties. And again, we're ninety-nine percent on the fourth. And in fact, we've already, in anticipation of this event tonight, already have two of those closing scheduled for tomorrow. And we can, you know, delay those if we have to. I don't want to seem presumptuous or anything, but we're going on faith in some of these things. So this gets it to the point where, A, some of these purchases are higher than the purchase limit that staff has, so we would have to come to you for approval on that anyway. The two tomorrow do not, are not over our, our staff limits, but the title company wanted to see a resolution. So that's why this resolution is worried as it is with kind of all the projects, all the properties are lumped together. Two of those we need purchasing authority for. So we pretty much just asked for permission to close these purchases in accordance with the, with the MOAs, which again, were based on the fair market values. And I think that I can safely say that three point five of the property owners are a hundred percent satisfied with where we're at. I don't want to speak for them out of turn, and the other one is just right there in terms of getting on board. And again, that one's more about details related to that improvement relocation. So I kind of got stuck not moving forward on the slides, so this, I've already talked about this slide. But that really is just kind of where we're at right now. And here's some pictures. That's what we call the role plot. It's kind of a design graphic of the project. I know it's a lot of information in a small place, but wanted to show you that. This is based on the ninety percent design, which is complete. And if, it's the same graphic that's hanging on the whiteboard back here, too, if you need to see it in a, in a bigger format. That's just the project itself, along with starting it first. Looks very similar to what we've seen before. We've had to make a few minor changes with driveways, and that affected some of the parking a little bit. I think we lost one or two parking spaces because of that. Still working through kind of the final details on the landscaping. Not uncommon for that to come towards the end of a project like this, and, and the lighting a little bit as well. So that's the project. You can see the new striping there. This is the storm drain system that we're, it's basically going to run all the way from first towards the east, towards fifth, and then down fifth. And you can see that's, that's pretty exciting. It's just a pipe under the ground, but I have a picture of it. And all the way, no more swimming pool. Yeah. At least that's the plan. Down to discharge at where Coal Creek kind of pops out of the old town developed area and becomes an actual creek again, where we can safely discharge that without impacting any downstream property owners. Any questions so far? I don't want to run through this too fast. Our current schedule, so as everybody knows by now, we've got to spend this grant money by the end of next year, by December, and we have basically the first quarter of twenty-seven to close out all the paperwork. And, and of course, that's a pretty heavy lift at the end of a project like this. If, I haven't said it already, but you've probably gathered that we're confident that we can avoid the imminent domain process, and I know that wasn't. I mean, we were pretty sternly instructed to avoid that by the board, and we're on board with that because that adds time to the schedule and something to be avoided for many reasons. And so we're pretty happy about that. Here is the schedule. These things are not especially easy to read. So I'm going to summarize a couple of, a couple of the dates for you. The construction. Right now, we're working through the final contract documents. It's the contract itself and the drawings and the specs and the whole gigantic package that would go out to bid. And we're looking to advertise January first or shortly thereafter. Thought about advertising in December, but it's hard to get anybody to really pay attention because of the holidays. So hopefully, they'll come back hungry for some work on January first with an anticipated construction start of March, early March, and a construction end, excuse me, in November. And then we've, you know, basically we've got to the end of the year, but hopefully we'll be finished with the project. It'll be accepted and approved and everything, and we'll move into the closeout of the documents in December. But if that doesn't happen, we've still got the first quarter of twenty-seven to get that done. So again, the, the permission that we're asking for tonight, which we've tried to describe in the resolution, I won't read the resolution to you unless I need to. But we're looking for your authority to spend over the thirty thousand dollar max that staff has for two of the purchases. We've got a total budget in there. We're right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the whole thing, which is exactly what we were budgeting, so that was pretty thrilling for me. And, and again, we've got two closings tomorrow. If you guys say okay, we'll, we'll make those closings happen, and if not, we'll reschedule them, and we'll still make them happen. So any questions?
Questions from the board on this item? No? Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? No? All right. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to pass Resolution number fifty-two dash two zero two five, a resolution by the town of Wellington, Colorado authorizing staff to acquire certain properties needed to complete the Cleveland Avenue Improvement Project.
Second. Any closing comments? No. Thank you, sir. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item D five?
Grace Village Wellington Food Pantry Discretionary Fund Request.
Thank you. And then Donna Visaki, the Grace Village Director of Public Relations and Fundraising, will present. Oh, oh, and Mark, Mr. Gabbert. Perfect.
Thank you for letting us present to you again. We so appreciate your support for this project. And.
Yes, we do. And we've presented before on the project. Everybody's aware of the need and of our plans to meet the need, which has increased. Our most recent distribution of food, last week, we served over a hundred and twenty families. Our norm is eighty. Now, with Snap back in place, it could be that that will normal. Now with the snap back in place, it could be that that will normalize, normalize a bit. But we still anticipate increased visits for people who are food insecure. So what we're looking at now and we're not ready to go a hundred percent public with some big news about potential funding that will take uh, our capital campaign everywhere it needs to go. But it's looking very positive. We, we heard yesterday from a source that we are going to receive a sizable grant. That will get us where we need to be in terms of capital. What we're here to request has to do now with operating. We've been so focused on capital that we haven't put enough emphasis on the needs we have for spending. We are now budgeting about twenty-five hundred dollars a month for food purchasing, which is about double, more than double what we were doing just a year ago. So we are excited about this possibility that this could be used for our operating budget. Which will enable us to buy more food to, to help our operation. We also have a tentative agreement right now with Pooter School District and uh, Istone Elementary, that we will be able to use part of their facility temporarily. And move out of River of Life before January and open up a pantry at the school. We will be able to have expanded hours, much more accessibility than we currently have. So we anticipate that our the amount of food we'll distribute will go up significantly there. So I don't know if anybody had any general questions or wants us to review any of the data that we've shared before.
I have a question.
Trustee Moore.
Unless I'm missing something. On the application, it states that the use will be the design and installation of the accommodations for ADA. That was the old one?
Yes.
Questions? I apologize, Trustee Moore, but all of my questions were also related to this. Cause our application process specifically states that we don't handle operational costs with our applications. So if I'm trying to understand.
I'm looking, hold on, I haven't pulled open the whole packet, but I've got.
I was looking at one sixty-five.
Hold on, let me open up the whole packet. I'm looking at the individual.
Within the PDF?
I don't know how to do anything else.
Hold on, you're looking at page one sixty-five.
Okay, yep, I see it.
I'm looking at, okay. So mine is one pa- is page one sixty-three.
Question five.
Oh, you're looking at the application itself. Okay, yeah, so the application does say that.
So this is the correct application?
Nope. I don't know if it's the correct application.
Sounds like the preview.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
I wonder if it got, it stated eleven seven twenty-five though.
And it's at the dollar amount.
Right, it's the same, yeah, all the other information matches.
Yeah.
It's probably because it was a separate PDF or.
Seventeen five and they're asking for seventeen.
So this is what they're saying.
Well, and then Mayor, I still need clarification on the operations listing. In our application process, it says that we cover projects, not operations.
So then there's seventeen five and then funding is used to underwrite the cost and design and installation ADA accommodations. So that, that piece maybe didn't get corrected or something. And then pension stage project, project is in design. And then down here, we've got.
Though the question was, what did you do with the money you've got from you in the past? That's what that.
Remember that we, were funds left over, so how were the funds utilized?
How we were using the other funds that we received.
Perfect.
Yes, so was the funding, has your organization applied for a grant or received funding from the town of Wellington before? Yes. And then how was the funding used? Funding is being used to underwrite the cost of design and installation of ADA accessible accommodations.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, I read it too quickly perhaps.
And when you all are talking about operations, are you talking about like the purchase of the food? Because like, like Trustee Teets had mentioned, this can't be used for like paying staff or anything like that. It would, it would be.
Well, we do have this.
Sure. So maybe the term operations isn't the right word to use. Maybe it's just purchasing of food to supply the food pantry.
That's exactly what it will be. So we could change the terminology to that. There, there won't, it won't be used for anything but that.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
I'll let you. Did you have any additional questions? Trustee Moyer?
Nope, just that one. Okay, I shouldn't have asked.
No, I had the same question. So, um, no, and that was just my clarification. I know that in our applications, it specifically states that when you check a box saying you realize this funding won't go towards any kind of overhead staff payments, anything like that. This is directly project based and my understanding is this seventeen thousand will be completely utilized solely for purchasing food for this food pan- food pantry.
Uh, exactly for that use.
Okay, perfect. And that was my clarification question. I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I just want to verify that we're following our processes and procedures, just so we don't have someone come back after us later and say, hey, you approved this, but you didn't approve this.
The numbers are, is in this written part, it's our food costs. When we are purchasing food at the beginning of the year, we're six hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. And now they're over two hun- two thousand. That's how much they've jumped. Just, we buy milk, we buy eggs, we buy butter, we buy meat. Yeah. You know, those are products that we can't get from, you know, Laramie County Food Pantry and that. And so that's where most of our budget goes, is to purchase food. I, I think, and there's a budget attached to that and you'll see that's where, you know, all of our budget goes and that. One of the things I really wanted to emphasize too is the fact that we are moving into this new space and that. And we are so excited because it gives us an opportunity to do a trial run and figure out how many days do we need to be open? How much volunteers do we need? How much food do, do we need as we kind of transition into our new space, you know, which hopefully will be open sometime next fall. And that, so we'll have a lot of time to figure things out. And we're, we're so excited that we can use this space by the school district. You know, and figure those things out. So by the time we're in our new space, we, we know what we're doing.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome.
And again, I think the, just the funding to keep the groceries going. And our emphasis has been on the capital campaign and that. And now as, as we were getting capital grants coming in, I'm shifting my focus on program grants, operating grants, things like that. So we do have funds coming in for now and the future, just to operate the food pantry. Once we get in, especially once we get this money, this big money that we have coming.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board on this? Um, Mayor Proton?
I, I, I do have just one question. And actually, I think this is maybe more for the town administrator, town administrator or potentially the board. I, I, I certainly don't have a problem funding this. We've got seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-two in the Board Discretionary Fund balance. My only question I think for the board would be, and, and potentially, we, I, I think the board had directed the Boys and Girls Club to potentially come back before the end of the year with an additional request. Obviously, this request would, would wipe that balance out. So again, I'm fine approving it, but I just wanted to be sure that we didn't have any other grantees coming down the pipeline. Or whether there was an expectation that they would still be coming back. I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion.
I believe the Boys and Girls Club did receive a match for the amount that we provided, so they should be in good shape.
Thank you.
Works for me.
The, the gentleman who did provide that matches in our audience tonight.
If your decision needs to be postponed a month, I think we're, we're okay with that. We're, we're here for the whole community. Boys and Girls Club means a lot to everybody. So if you anticipate that they might need some of this, then, then we're okay with waiting a month. That's fine.
I'll, I'll leave it. We'll see, we'll see what, where the board takes it. Trustee Teets?
If I may, I think this is one of the reasons why when we had talked about allowing applications, we were talking about one application per year, per nonprofit. Um, I think maybe that probably should be visited again this next year. But I am completely comfortable moving forward with funding. It looks like here through April twenty twenty-six, fifteen thousand has been your expenditures as far as food goes. Is that correct? So seventeen thousand dollars could very well work towards feeding our community and those in need for almost half a year. So I'm comfortable supporting this moving forward. I definitely suggest us as board, look at that application process possibly a little bit tighter this next year moving forward. But I'm comfortable knowing that Thanksgiving and Christmas and you guys are going to have a higher count. And what people are going to be consuming around the holidays is a little different than what you eat during regular weeks. So I'm comfortable moving forward with how it is presented. But that's just one person, so.
Trustee Cannon? Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Uh, I, I, I would be fine to, like I said, totally up to the board. I'd be fine to approve this tonight, either just with the full amount or we could amend it to, you know, something like thirteen K, leave four K in there. But totally up to the board. I'm, I'm fine to do either option. So, thank you, sir.
Trustee Moore?
I'm comfortable with funding it. I do want to say thank you so much for what you're doing, all these different crises, crises, go hand in hand. The affordable housing crisis leads to food insecurity, leads to you know, lack of healthcare, all of the things. So especially with the last couple of months. I really, really appreciate how you constantly show up for the community, but especially in times like these. Thank you.
I agree with what we've said so far. I think we ought to go ahead with the full funding. And again, we are kind of a little bit in a crisis mode now, so I think it'd be good to do that. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly?
Donna and Mark, thank you guys so much for presenting tonight. And I know we're familiar with the project. But just for anybody listening, and we have some new faces in the crowd today, so I want to do a quick introduction of this. Their capital project that they're talking about is for the Community Services Center, which is going to be a permanent home for the food bank in the future. These are huge plans, an amazing vision to meet the needs of the, the town of Wellington and surrounding residents. Where they are the most vulnerable when it comes to food insecurity. And thanks to organizations like Grace Village and other nonprofits in our town that are taking care of our residents. So thank you. That's a massive effort, of course, to be able to serve more people more frequently. And to be able to meet the most needs. In the meantime, I am just constantly impressed by this organization. Because not only are you guys still maintaining, you know, the services that you provide as the food bank, but you're already expanding them prior to even having a permanent location. And if we can help enable that to happen during these difficult times, especially during the holidays. I'm so happy that we could utilize our resources to enable you and activate you guys to do the amazing hard work that you do. So thank you now and always for all your effort to support our town.
Appreciate that. One thing that I think needs to be clarified for the whole community too, is Limer County Human Services will be opening two offices in this building. And that brings a ton of additional resources to people in need. So that, that's probably equal in value for this community to what we'll be providing with the, with the food. Will be those services. And then we're still in discussion with specialty counseling right now. We want to get some mental health services in there as well.
And wonderful. And everybody who's listening, there's opportunities for all of us to help the food bank right now. So for example, on Thursday, they're doing their stuff, stuff, the truck, turkey drive. And they're hoping to get hundreds of turkeys to provide to families for Thanksgiving. So the drop off locations are Wellington Manor, Rice Elementary and Wellington Middle High School. So please participate if you can. And they're also always collecting food at many locations too, including here at the library. But if you want to support them in particular on Thursday, bring a turkey.
Can I advertise one thing? We, we have this opportunity for a matching grant up to a hundred thousand dollars. Right now, we're at ninety-one thousand. So we are going to put it out in the community that by the end of the year, we're looking for that additional nine grand. That'll enable us to get the full one hundred thousand dollar matching grant from Schuler Foundation. So just putting it out there for anybody that might be in a position to help us with that goal. I don't know if I was supposed to advertise or not.
Yeah. No harm, no foul.
It's a great audience. It's a great audience to say something like that.
Yeah, by all means.
Um, I think what you said was really important, Mr. Gabbert, about the additional resources that this project is going to bring. Right now, we are in a resource desert. And if people have barriers like transportation, funds for transportation, we don't have public transportation to go down to Fort Collins to be able to take care of these social services. So I really appreciate that. We're going to be able to offer that to our community. And thank you again for all your hard work making those relationships happen.
Thank you. Um, all I have to say is you guys are an exemplary example of how to love your neighbor. You guys have served this community well. The hearts you guys have is huge. And so thank you very much for doing that. All right. Any comments from the public on this item?
Darren Roberson, Sage Homes. Jamie Basser, Basser Homes. He nudged me back there, so we'll actually pony up the nine thousand dollars between us. That way you make it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right. Having no further public comment, uh, do I hear a motion? Go ahead, please.
Y'all aren't ready to get out of here, are you?
I, that's not why. I moved to approve resolution, resolution number fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five. Just kidding, I moved to approve Grace Village Wellington Food Pantry Discretionary Fund Request.
I second.
Thank you. Any further comments before we vote? No. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosi?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Having no further business, all in favor of ending the meeting, say I did, I, perfect. Well, now during the special meeting time being seven thirteen PM, uh, we will take a ten minute recess before the work session begins. Perfect. Okay, uh, for the work session this evening, Ms. Garcia and Cody Bird will introduce the work session item. Um, but it is going to be on metropolitan districts. Mr. Bird?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Bird, Planning Director. Appreciate your time this evening. This is a work session, so as a reminder, we won't be making any actions. Uh, no decisions will be made. This is really for information and discussion purposes. As the mayor pointed out, the, the topic is on metropolitan districts. It's a pretty big topic and the purpose of tonight's meeting is not to get into every single detail of metropolitan districts and how they operate. But we do want to give you a broad overview of the subject matter. And the reason we're bringing this to the board is staff's been approached by our local development community with the request to consider. with the request to consider metropolitan districts for a new development proposal, um, as a financing tool. And they've asked if we can proceed with conversations regarding creation of a metropolitan district. And that's not something that staff has authority to take too far without some direction from the board. So that is the purpose for tonight's meeting. Love the delay on the, there we go. So just, we've put together some slides to kind of help guide the conversation tonight. And then just to give you an idea, um, what we're hoping to do is give you that high level overview of how metropolitan districts are created and formed and what they do. They are a Title thirty-two, uh, special district under Colorado revised statutes. So we'll give you that overview. We do have our development community here, Mr. Darren Roberson from Sage Homes and Jamie Bessler from Bessler Homes, um, that are development partners in the proposed, uh, consideration. And then at the end, we're going to come back to, um, seek some direction from the board on this topic. So, and I, we're just going to keep this really high level, just to kind of frame the conversation. Metropolitan districts are a Title thirty-two special district under Colorado revised statutes. Their creation, governance, guidance, service plan, all of that is very detailed, uh, under Colorado law. So it is a rigorous process to create. It does take, uh, some effort and some money to create these. And that's why we're going to be seeking that guidance on, uh, if it's something we should pursue. Generally speaking, not detailed speaking, but generally speaking, um, metropolitan districts are used as a financing tool. Uh, can be used to fund new development and the infrastructure for that development. Can be used for, uh, clubhouses, swimming pools, can be used for infrastructure like streets and, and, um, uh, water lines can be used for maintenance and operations of the systems that serve that community. So it's a pretty, uh, robust tool, but it has a detailed service plan for what is included in that metropolitan district. The way the financing works is the metropolitan district once created would issue debt. They would sell bonds and the proceeds from the bonds are the financing vehicle, um, that is, uh, establishes the, the rates and the mill levy. The mill levy is collected like a property tax and that repays the debt service, uh, to, um, the metro, metro district. The mill levy can only apply to the district, um, for which it's created. And that is, its creation does form, uh, an independent unit of local government. They have a board of directors and the board of directors are elected under the statutory provisions. Again, so I was keeping this high level. So there's a lot of details in those pieces, but this just kind of frames the next piece of the presentation for tonight. So many of you might be asking, well, why a metropolitan district? And this is again, very high level overview, um, not intended to be the details. But generally speaking, the metropolitan district can provide the infrastructure and the maintenance of that infrastructure, um, that the town wouldn't be required to provide. A detailed service plan would be created that outlines these are the improvements that the metro district would be, uh, creating and financing, and then adhere to the repayment of that. It can fund the maintenance too. Um, so that is something that is a little bit unique to these districts that, uh, other, other types of, districts don't have that power. The, one of the advantages to a metropolitan district is it spreads the financing cost out. You don't have to have it all cash upfront to make the project happen. It allows it to be spread over a longer period of time through collection of the, of the mill levy. Um, so that is a, a pretty good, uh, incentive for a developer to mitigate some of the upfront risk by spreading that cost over a longer period and dedicating a, a funding source. I mentioned it can fund design, construction and the ongoing operations and maintenance, which is, uh, a benefit to the server, the development that's served by those improvements. And I mentioned this a minute ago, so I don't want to completely rehash it, but there's a, a variety of projects that can be funded, um, by the metropolitan district, including some services like roads and water that the town normally, um, is the provider of. A metropolitan district can do that, but it can also provide for design, construction, maintenance of things the town doesn't cover, like private stormwater ponds, um, irrigation wells, irrigation distribution systems that serve that large community for the metro district. Uh, swimming pools and clubhouses or other amenities the town doesn't provide that could be a benefit to the, uh, community that it serves. So highest level possible probably there, um, just to kind of ground this conversation. But we're going to get a little bit more information from the, uh, development, uh, partners that are, uh, kind of asking this question of the town. As I mentioned, Darren Roberson and Jamie Bessler are here, uh, this evening. The ask that they're presenting is for consideration of this topic for the Sage Farms Plan Unit Development, uh, proposal. And with no further ado, I'm going to ask our clerk if she can switch over to the presentation slides that were prepared by, uh, the development partners here. I took the liberty of throwing a couple of names on there to know who was presenting. Um, and I know that Melissa Wheeler, um, contacted us to let us know she wasn't available tonight unless she can join remotely. And Hank McDougal's not here. I mean, those, uh, put those names on there just to make sure we knew who it was coming from, but only a couple of our presenters are here tonight. So that gives you just a, a quick framework. I'm going to come back to you, uh, after the developer presents their information here with a few guiding questions for the board, just seeking that direction, um, on this topic and giving staff and the developer some next steps that we can pursue.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is David O'Leary. I am, uh, with the law firm of Spencer Fane in Denver. I'm a special district and local government attorney. So I can assist with answering pretty much any questions that you guys have on what a district does and how it runs, how it's set up, how it operates and what it does. And, uh, I've been doing special districts since two thousand, so for about twenty-five years. Our firm represents, I, I represent over four hundred metro districts in different projects. I have a hundred and forty-eight projects and four hundred and thirty-five different districts. So a lot of them have multiple districts for the different things that they're doing. And then some of the other partners, we have like a team of fifteen people that specialize in special districts and local government in the Denver office. So we're available to answer any questions that you guys have or be a resource for you if you need anything. We, uh, we reviewed the Metro District one-on-one presentation and, uh, I can walk through it and answer any questions that you have. Uh, just from a high level, uh, metro districts are primarily for, uh, they're a funding tool. For, um, in public infrastructure, they can only be used for public improvements. So streets, water, sewer, drainage, those kinds of things. And anything that the town doesn't take for a permanent, um, acceptance, it can be owned, operated, maintained by the district. It's an alternative to HOAs. Uh, but it is a, there are, they are local governments. You as the governing jurisdiction are the approving jurisdiction for the service plan. So we provide, um, reporting to you as our governing jurisdiction and to the state. So we have annual budget requirements, annual audit requirements, those kinds of things as well. So there's a bunch of different things that we are required to do by state statute to provide that and, and allow the public to participate. There are different taxing authorities in any jurisdiction. This is just an example of another Bessler, um, subdivision. When you have, uh, something that you look up on the county, uh, website. If you look at a particular parcel, it can tell you, uh, where the parcel is, what taxing authorities, the overlapping mill levies and the different things that are in that district. As an example, these are just the overlapping tax authorities for one parcel in one of those districts. It hits, these are all the special districts or local government authorities that assess a mill levy that's, um, being collected for purposes of funding their particular piece. Whether it's the community college, the metro district, in this instance, it was Andrew, Andrew's Farm Metro District, but also the water district, the sewer district, the library district, the fire district, the town, um, any water authorities, um, any regional drainage and the county. So all those aggregate, uh, mill levies and taxes are assessed and come up with the aggregate mill levy on a parcel. It's available to any property owner, either both at closing and on the county website. But when you ask how much, how are my taxes calculated? This is the overlapping mill levy that is assessed and collected against each property. A special district's a quasi municipal government, so it's quasi corporate, quasi municipal. So we act like a corporation. We have board meetings, but it's public as well. So all of the government functions of a district were required to have elections every two years for directors. We stagger the terms so residents can serve on those boards. Uh, there is attrition and, and the ultimate, um, objective of these is to turn it over to the residents. So it's a local representative board of, of directors that will over time turn over to the residents. The, um, entity has the power to impose taxes and other fees and charges for the services within its boundaries or for the infrastructure that it provides. Um, and those public services, uh, for the counties, municipalities, and those other jurisdictions either don't have the money, uh, time, or, um, it's not high on their priority list. The state and the local governments allow the districts to be formed as a, a method for basically, uh, development paying its own way. So those are the things that you could potentially get to, but you're allowing the formation of the district for purposes of doing what you would do. It's just pushed off onto, uh, the metro district for purposes of taxation. They build the infrastructure, they turn it over to the owner, operator and maintainer of that infrastructure. So you don't have a hand in, in most of the financing for those things, but we fund it, turn it over. We still have to comply with all your public improvement requirements, all your development approval requirements. The district just stands in as a potential funding mechanism and a potential operating mechanism for those things that aren't dedicated to another entity. We are an independent, um, unit of government, but we do respond to you guys. You guys are, your city, our town, our counties, sometimes they can't afford or don't want to pay for the public infrastructure for individual developments. This allows the developer or builder or homeowners in the subdivision to finance the public infrastructure over a longer period of time. It also lowers the cost of capital. So most districts can only, uh, fund somewhere between twenty-five and forty-five percent of the public infrastructure. The rest of it is funded by the developer. And those, um, are not collected by taxes, so they make up for the deficit. But this allows them to get, um, municipal or tax exempt financing. And any of the mill levies are tax deductible on a homeowner versus fees that would not be tax deductible. Special districts versus HOAs, uh, they have the power to impose property taxes and fees. The HOAs typically, uh, organized as a nonprofit corporation. And they have all the different things that, uh, are governed by the common Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act or CAO. And the board turnover to homeowners requires, uh, or is required based on a percentage of the homes occupied. So usually it's a sixty-seven percent, um, threshold before it is required to be turned over. Metro districts are different. So every two years after the year formation, we have a director election. So there's either three terms or two terms that are up each May of odd numbered years. And the residents have an opportunity to run, um, as opposed to an HOA that has to wait until sixty-seven percent, um, are, are actually sold to a third party. Uh, the district's quasi municipal and, and a political subdivision, so it's subject to Title thirty-two. All the open meetings laws, all the budget laws, and it's a form of local government, has to hold elections and regular board meetings and elections, just like, uh, the town does. They're open to the public. Anybody can participate. And, uh, they must keep the facilities open to the public. So anything that's financed by a district, that's owned, operated, maintained by the district, um, has to be open to the public. So all of our parks, all of our, um, trails, all of our open spaces have to be open to the public as well. So it's not formed and financing just stuff for that subdivision. Anything that's financed with public funds has to be open to the public.
Sir?
I can keep going. No, I can keep going. So a service plan is just our governing document. It would be similar to a bylaws for a corporation. It just defines the four corners of what the district can do. It's all based on statute. Um, so we're required to adhere to the Title thirty-two statute. It'll define the services and powers that we have. It'll also define who owns, operates, maintains, the improvements when they're completed for construction. The debt cap, the mill levy cap, the district boundaries and legal descriptions, all the financial modeling, uh, the mill levies, fees and reimbursement timing and capital and O and M cost estimates. So we provide all of the four corners as, um, budgets and estimates when we initially go through. All of it is subject to town approval and any, um, any public improvement costs that are estimated are all subject to approved development plan approval as well. So there could be modifications. Sometimes we'll include a contingency in our estimates. But whatever we construct has to be in accordance with approved development plans of the town. The mill levy is determined, um, through the county assessor's office. So on an annual basis, a residential property is assessed at, um, a different assessment rate for residential. Uh, it used to be, uh, seven point nine six. I think it's down to six point seven percent. And it's dropping. So that residential assessment rate is the state determined assessment rate for residential property. And that property, you take the actual value of a home, multiply it by the assessment ratio. And that's for every odd numbered year in state legislature, the residential assessment rate for twenty-three, twenty-four was six point two five and it's dropped since then. The current assessment ratio can be obtained from the county assessor's office. And the applicable mill levy is applied, it's multiplied, so it's divide whatever the actual value of a house is by a thousand, multiply it by, uh, the assessment rate and that'll determine what your mill levy is. We're required to provide all that information to every homeowner. It is required to be on both a builder disclosure for every builder and a metro district disclosure. So all of those things are recorded against the property and made available to every homeowner. We also record a general, um, disclosure of common questions and contact information for all the different entities and how people can get information on the district or the mill levies or how to calculate their taxes. So as an example, the sample, sample calculation for Hudson Hills assuming sixty-seven mills, you take four hundred and fifty thousand dollar actual value, multiply it by six point two five, which is the assessment rate for that year or this year, and it comes up with us two hundred, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollar assessed valuation for that resident. The property tax is assessed is divided by a thousand. And then the mill levy applies to every thousand in value. So sixty-seven mills would result in eighteen hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents of annual property tax or a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and three cents per month. And then dropping in another district, Liberty Draw is also a metro district has a lower mill levy. That one has the same kind of calculation times that six point two five percent. Eight, a three hundred and ten thousand dollar actual value will result in an assessment, the assessment rate of six point two five. Nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars would be the assessed valuation of that three hundred and ten thousand dollar home. The property tax on that would be divided by a thousand for the assessed valuation and multiply by the mill levy in order to get twelve hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-four cents for annual property tax or a hundred and seven dollars and thirty-seven cents a month. Special districts are organized to finance the formation, construction, acquisition, operations and maintenance of public improvements. We've enabled, uh, through state legislature to finance these actions through the imposition and collection of taxes, fees, rates, tools, penalties and charges. Those are all statutorily based, um, and they have to be rationally related to a legitimate public purpose. They can't be assessed and collected for just anything. They have to go towards either public improvements or operations. That's it. Districts are required to budget and appropriate funds in order to pay for their cost of construction, acquisition, operation and maintenance. And revenue received for those taxes, uh, fees and developer advances are used to fund those public improvements. The districts may assess other supplemental operation fees for architectural review, transfer fees, status letter fees, violation fees, et cetera. Those, um, would be separate and distinct, but have to be fully disclosed to a resident before they're assessed. We're also subject to Colorado Open Records Act, so QUoera requests and the Colorado Sunshine, Sunshine laws also apply. So every meeting is a gathering of a quorum or a majority of the directors to discuss and conduct district business. That requires the posting of notices. Agenda minutes and conflict disclosures have to be filed with the Secretary of State's office. Oftentimes, we also file that, at least the agenda, with the town, so they know that we're having a meeting. And in case anybody has something to add or or anybody wants to be present. They're always open to the public. The district's required to have a minimum of one meeting a year to adopt a budget. And we also have to have an annual meeting, we're required by statute, to have an annual public meeting where no decisions are made, but every resident can ask any question that they want. We have to do the budget year to date, so all the expenditures and revenues to the date. Sometimes we'll do that in the middle of the year. We have to explain all the public infrastructure and the status of construction and development, and also any outstanding bonds, what that means to them, and the status of the bonds. So that's required to be done every year separately from the budget meeting. And that's just an opportunity for residents to ask anything they want. And then effective January one of twenty twenty-two, that builder disclosure that I talked about, all home builders have to have metro district disclosures signed with new home contracts for a home buyer. So if you're in a metro district, that builder also has to provide a separate disclosure with certain statutory requirements. A lot of times we'll help them with that, so they have all the necessary information, but it's contact information for the district, what the mill levy could be, who they can contact for different things, who the board of directors is, how do they get additional information, what the district website is. We're required to have an ADA compliant website as well. So we post all of our district information and documents on an ADA compliant website. So any of the visually impaired people or who can't see, that has to be available to them and remediated documents or have a reader. So any of those documents can be available to everybody. The developer has to also record the disclosure against the property, so the homeowners have it included in the title work as well. And I'm available for any questions. I pretty much could answer anything that you have, but we're all resources for you and happy to answer, help you with anything that you need.
Thank you. Any questions before Cody comes up here? Mr. Bird, sorry, Mr. Bird. Oh, okay. Come on up, gentlemen.
Sorry, kind of got out of order there, guys, but I think in the day we thought it'd be good to bring David in because he is the expert. We have reached out to him to give us advice if the board gives us direction on what direction to go. I always swore I hated metropolitan districts, metro districts. I'd never work with them. Being a builder, it's it's different than being a developer. Obviously, we're going to be both roles. But I can say openly that HOAs' hands are tied. And honestly, I don't think I will do this development if it's an HOA because there's no enforcement. It's such a big project, and we're so worried about the first phase when there's not enforcement of what happens down the road as we expand through and and you can't get a quorum because you can't get sixty-seven percent of the members there. And metro districts have come a long ways. I mean, there is some bad wraps. They've been abused. If we abuse it, we abuse ourselves because it's our, we'll be building in there also. With the metro district, hopefully we give lots at a lesser price, which brings more affordability. And that's kind of what we're looking for, is just having that and having a governmental entity that can oversee the SPE, which is kind of a good buffer for the town with the special purpose entity. So we see the value in it. That's kind of why we reached out to David, who's done it in a lot of areas within the state. Because if we're going to do it, we have the board's direction to do it, we want to have the best team. So sorry, we kind of gave you a longer high level than we thought, but really, we're just looking for direction from the town. And I think we've all heard it before. And I think it's four things need to go if if we're going to move this project forward and create a great subdivision. Jamie's got some other comments on it, too, that, I mean, obviously they've done them before and I haven't. But let him go.
So again, thank you for your time this evening. So Bussler Homes has been a part now of four different metro districts. So it's, our first one was in twenty eighteen that we put in in Alt. We have a community in Evans, Liberty Draw, one Hudson, Hudson Hills, and then we're in the process of doing another one in Fort Lupton right now. And so, yeah, so we do definitely have some experience with this. And the the single biggest thing that Darren highlighted is our ability in a large master planned community to be able to be sure that we can enforce the covenants that we've put in place and maintain the appearance of a community that's critical to the life and the health really long term. I mean, certainly for the time we're there building, we're very concerned. But the reality is you want that in place for the entirety of however long that community exists, right? And so that this, it has a governance structure that allows for long-term health of a community. And really, the enforcement, which if the community can't enforce it, who do they call? They're going to call you. And so that is a very critical component because of the restrictions that the state has put in place on HOAs and their ability to truly enforce covenants. So that's the single biggest reason why it's critical to any major master plan community that we're a part of developing and building within anymore. If this was a hundred homes or fewer, then the cost of the setup and establishing it could be prohibitive from putting it in. So that's kind of the economies of scale of where this makes sense. Obviously, Sage Farms is a substantial community. And both, not just residential, but commercial, too. So critical for enforcement, critical for long-term health and appearance. And then also the structured and open governance that it requires is also a huge distinction from an HOA. Beyond that, David briefly touched on the tax deductibility. So understanding the mill levy generally replaces an HOA fee. Right? So this isn't adding in a whole additional burden. This is actually at least, generally, at least fifty percent of the mill levy burden is an offset to what would generally have an HOA fee to do the same types of maintenance and things within the community. So that's a nice advantage there, that that fee is now tax deductible as part of the property taxes. And then the last piece is financing, and there's really two components to the financing to think about. The first is for, as a developer, as a as a developer, very specifically, the heaviest lift is phase one. And getting phase one going requires generally a tremendous amount of capital. The bulk of that capital is secured by a developer through debt. And the way that that debt works, I mean, you're talking ten, fifteen million dollars worth of debt with a bank. A lot of banks, just quite frankly, are unwilling to do that much when there's nothing built yet. With a metro district, it allows us a funding mechanism that is, it's off of our balance sheet. It is not a part of our bank covenants because it is the district that's guaranteeing that debt, not us as a home builder or a developer. And that's a big distinction when it comes down to a bank might be willing to do seven million if they have then this alternate, if we have this additional funding source available. So that's part of the financing, the capital stack necessary with these larger projects also. So it's a big part of the project feasibility in some cases, especially with these larger projects. And then there is a lot, what's that? Yeah. And so that was the other then component is there's a lower, the trade off then is yes, there's a they're basically, you're financing a portion of the lot cost is is kind of how the consumer is receiving this. You're financing a portion of the lot cost. And then we're building a house on that lot, and obviously that's financed, too. But what we're able to do as a developer is lower the price of that lot. The sale cost of that lot is lower because we didn't have to go get the additional eight million in the example I gave you. That's already been financed. So that eight million is being paid through the mill levy. And then the thirty-year mortgage is then paying the rest of the cost of the house. But it effectively will help us reduce the price of a house overall, because the lot cost can be reduced then, too. And then the last component, we think of financing is, let's fast forward thirty years. The bonds are paid off. The community is debt-free. Well, now they want to do some additional improvement to a park, to the clubhouse. They have a built-in funding mechanism that they can go build those improvements. And if the board chooses to approve that, they can, no different than you go through the approval of a budget and infrastructure, they have an internal process where they can do those future improvements within their own community so that, you know, if they choose. So I think those are the big rocks of why we would be looking to have a metro district for for any community of this kind of scale.
Thank you. Trusted Wigan?
Couple of quick questions. On, this is going to be a long-term project. How many phases you gonna have?
It's a fifteen, twenty-year project.
Right.
Best is twenty twenty-five.
So is each phase going to have a different metro district?
It'd be a stub. Yeah, I would just because you don't know when it's going to hit or if you're going to change different product. We usually do multiples.
No problem.
That's what I brought in.
Oh, absolutely.
We usually do multiple districts either for different phases or different products.
Especially with it being this long of a term.
Exactly. And then the other thing is, commercial usually taxes at a different rate than residential. So we don't want to tax at the same rate, and you don't want residents on a commercial board or commercial people on a resident board. So we usually match it up to the phases of development. If we don't use them, we collapse them. So we always have a consolidation or dissolution provision in every service plan. So when the purposes of the districts are done, we either consolidate it or we dissolve it. The only reason that it stays in existence is to either pay debt or to operate something that the town doesn't want to operate. But ultimately, when we hit full build out and all fifteen years are done, we're going to consolidate it down to maybe one, maybe two. There's probably going to be a need to keep a commercial one separate from a residential. But the objective is to minimize after you're done, but allow that flexibility for different builders.
So when doing this, you could have a commercial metro district and a presidential, okay?
And usually the commercial, because the assessment rate's a lot higher.
Right.
We usually assess a lower mill levy for that one because it just can't top, businesses can't tolerate that higher tax. And you have to provide enough of an incentive, and you've probably seen that when you hit commercial. You have to provide them incentives to try to build there, or are they going to go to a different community?
Perfect. Another question. I saw on your presentation there, there was one that had the metro cost like a hundred bucks a month. The other one was like a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Did they have any of the extra clubhouses or is that just a base amount?
It it depends on the project, so I hate to sound like an attorney, but it depends. Typically, it wouldn't.
Trying to get an idea what the average cost would be like on a half a million dollar home? And would that be for a home with no amenities? And then what would it be like with amenities? I know I've heard of one metro district around here that's like six, seven hundred dollars a month.
Right. That one's unusual, but usually something that much of a fee would have a rec center, a pool, those kinds of things. I don't think we're talking about that as far as magnitude. But the difference in mill levies is usually because of amenities. So if there's additional parks, if there's entryway features, there's monuments, if there's top, in addition to top lots, there's a community park that's a big thing, or if there's regional trails, then the mill levy usually is a little bit higher for those ones, just in order to get things financed. But once the stuff is financed and the debt is paid, it'll reduce down to just what you need to operate. So there's, there's two pieces for the financing. The mill levy will pay for both debt and operations. Debt doesn't kick in until there's bonds, but once the debt's paid off, it'll reduce down to just what you need to operate.
Okay. How do you determine how much you can save per home, per lot? You know, you're talking about, I mean, it was going to be six thousand, eight thousand, hundred thousand per lot? I mean, you have
There's different.
I know there's approximations on this, but, you know, just so you know what you can pass on to the savings for the consumer at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to go off the cuff, but I mean.
Yeah, just roughly.
You think with a metro district, you able to get a lot down to maybe a hundred, hundred and five?
Yeah, generally, we're we're saying between ten and fifteen thousand.
Ten and fifteen.
And it's a general trade off.
If you think of it just in terms of what your cost of capital is, a developer or a construction loan out to a bank, they want security, one, and two, their rates are always higher. So you're talking a twelve to fifteen percent rate on just a construction loan versus a metro district rate, which is usually tax exempt.
Correct.
Which is somewhere between four and seven percent. And as you get assessed valuation, so just like your house, when you get creditworthiness, you get a lower rate. And as the thing builds out, your financing, the financing rates go down because you'll have more assessed valuation, more creditworthiness out of the market.
Okay.
Bonds can also be refinanced by the district, too. So should there be, no different than a home, refinance. You can refinance bonds, too.
Okay, when you do.
Generally, there's a five-year window, maybe.
And and typically, those bonds won't be refinanced unless there's a net present interest savings. So there has to be some kind of savings or drop in interest rate before that finance is available to keep that tax exempt rate.
Okay.
But yeah, should rates reduce? And the district has the ability to even lower their.
And another last question, and I'll shut up. Okay. I know you were talking about, you know, parks, maintenance, and all this type of stuff. I was, thought I was under the impression that that was going to be taken over by the city, so that would not be part of the extra cost that you got.
Yeah, so much parks. I mean, we got
Right.
In this first phase, though, that all the open space and parks are actually maintained by the metro district or the HOA.
Okay.
We, we're not even in that next phase where the
That's where the big one went, okay.
So, and you know, really, it's the wells, too. I mean, having the metro district oversee the wells within the whole community. So you get a governmental entity overseeing it, not a home buyer that works nine to five, making sure the pump's going.
That's one of the
Yeah, and primarily it's to fund it. So to fund the construction or the improvements or the upgrades of the things that you need to develop those parks in open space, those costs are financed through the district. But any operations that comes into play is just for the things that aren't taken.
Right. Last question. I had somebody that I know, they had a house over in, I think, Severance. And they just got re-mill levied almost double what they were. Is that, I mean, I I believe the board of director, directors take care of that. And on ours, well, how will that be determined? I mean, if it's two, three, four years down the road, where is it going to be mainly builder directed? Or is it going to be one builder and the other people is going to be the residents?
So the assessment rate changing?
Yes.
On a house, because initially you have vacant land.
Right.
And that's assessed at a vacant land rate. So ag land is valued at very low. When you have a platted lot, that platted lot value is a developed lot and it's commercial, but it's got a smaller value, but it does have value. When you put a house on it, that house goes from whatever that lot value is to the actual house. And the assessor's office usually has a lag between the time that you sell a house and the time that they recognize it. So when you buy a house, depending upon when you buy it, you're going to have a proration of of tax responsibility. So up until the sale, it's these guys' responsibility. After the sale, it's the homeowner's responsibility. But the assessor's office doesn't pick up the value of that house for one to two years after the house is sold. So the county assessors doesn't pick up the increase in value for at least a year, sometimes more.
You hope.
Yeah, and and it depends on the county.
Oh, I know.
Right. The the increase in value that happens on a property is typically because of the assessor's office. And we had a huge increase in property values at the assessor level for every house, and it was thirty to fifty percent increase. That was because of the assessor only, it's called a reassessment year, and it only happens every two years. So that changed in value.
Bad.
Yes. And and it's, it's interesting because what the market dictated and what the market did is during the COVID time, the interest rates dropped so low that people were getting three percent interest rates, everybody. So to the extent they could either finance a house or refinance a house, all of those properties were selling at record, record sales prices. There was a feeding frenzy to get them. People were offering more than the value of the house. So those people who are offering sixty thousand dollars in cash above pricing, what that did is your comp values for all your houses skyrocketed. And when those three percent interest rates were gone, all of a sudden, both the people who have the houses and the assessor's office were like, our comp values are sixty to a hundred thousand dollars more than they should be. And so everybody's valuation went up forty percent. And that's a function of the market. It wasn't the assessor's office, and and it wasn't the metro districts or any public entities. It was because the assessment rate took two years to catch up. And where they should have made that change is at the assessor's level on the And where they should have made that change is at the assessor's level on the valuation, not it's not the local governments. We just assess the same mill levy. But the taxes are going up and the value of the houses skyrocketed forty percent. So a person's taxes would go up, but it really wasn't a function of the mill levy. It was a function of the assessor assessing super high value to property, higher than you could actually fathom or even paid for for your house.
One other component, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but right, this is where this, you talked about the service plan. And the service plan would be specific to Sage Farms. And you determine the terms of that service plan. Within the service plan, one of the important components is a max mill levy. It can never go above that. You all will determine what that is, what those guardrails are. Yeah.
Mm hmm. So it's, it's both the debt cap and the mill rate? And we'll provide you if we, if we get there and you guys want to proceed, we'll provide you comparable mill levy rates for different metro districts and surrounding communities. So you have a sampling of what the mills are that are assessed by other districts and other jurisdictions. So you can see, this is what a, a residential assessment rate. Um, and this is what a mill levy would be in comparable projects.
Yeah, with this being such a long term project, I see the benefit of this big time on it. And uh, like I say, the tax deductibility of it. I mean, for the, the person buying it, I mean, again, you can't deduct HOA fees. So I mean, there's a lot of good benefits to it too. So.
Again, we're needing that direction from the board.
Yeah.
We have approval to kind of, we're just.
I.
He's not cheap.
Oh, come on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll find out.
Um, so I was doing quick Google searches, but I was, um, I don't think they do. But do any of your current um, metro districts have affordable housing requirements? I think I've found that they do not.
No, not a lot do. So some of that's jurisdiction specific.
Mm hmm.
Um, but not, not any of Jamie's districts. They don't have affordable, affordable housing. Now, um.
I, I would, I would say we do have affordable housing, absolutely.
Just not requirements for the metro district.
Different.
And we're not using any sort of subsidy to create a next level of affordability.
So that was kind of where I was going. Uh, I, in our um, trustee daily and my question session, um, I think, was it Melissa that started talking about the um, ability to vary mills based on the type of housing products? So for a mixed use development, you could have several different levels of debt, which could then help to um, dictate the affordability of the units, right?
And and multiple districts will have different types of products. So I, the, the difficulty from uh, an attorney's perspective
Mm hmm.
is affordable housing has a certain definition and
Oh, yeah.
in state statute and code.
Yep.
But attainable housing is a little bit different.
Mm hmm.
Something that people can afford to live in is a little bit different than affordable housing. But having different product types and multifamily and townhomes and pricing points that people can actually afford, that is more possible with a district.
Mm hmm.
Um, and there are some communities that want the estate lots and the big houses.
Mm hmm.
Um, and some communities that need a variety of different product types in order to do that. And and I think that these guys are doing a variety of different things and different product types. So it's more attainable for people, which is a little bit different than the definition of affordable housing. Some of your concerns on whether or not this is affordable to people is different than affordable housing. So we can hit, we can hit a lot of those concerns.
Right. I'm very aware about the difference and that's kind of where I'm going is I think that we have had our affordable housing assessment done and we have like, if you could have negative units, we have negative, I mean, we are in dire need. And so I just wanted to bring that up tonight so that everyone was aware um, at how useful this could be as a catalyst for achieving some of our goals for not only attainable housing, but truly affordable housing based on the thirty percent AMI because uh, or thirty percent of the income. Um, because we need that too. And so if there's a way that we could take this and use it for that purpose, not solely. But, uh, right, then I would be highly encouraged um, to begin looking at that and how that's going to work.
And usually when I have projects that have multiples and, and more than just like three or four, it's not just a phasing thing. So I have, I have some projects that have up, you know, ten and up for districts, but they have apartments. They have condos, they have townhomes, they have alley loaded lots. They have duplexes, they have triplexes, they have nickel family homes. So the variety of product types and each of their own districts
Mm hmm.
allows for the developer and the builders to price how the market needs it to be.
Mm hmm.
And have such a variety that the community itself is a better community because they have all that variation.
Right. So we need things across the housing continuum. Um, we need that executive housing and then like I said, we do need that truly affordable housing and everything in between. And so if there would be um, a way to have a mixed use development that does look at the full continuum of housing, um, and I'm not trying to plan your development for you, but yeah, well.
Well, and and just to clarify, so yeah, based on the affordable definition, okay, that, that makes sense. But um, because our focus, as we were here last week speaking to, right? It is to provide the most attainably priced housing we possibly can at market rate conditions. Because the reality is that's the only one that's sustainable. Everything beyond that requires subsidy in some form or fashion.
Mm hmm.
And as soon as you say subsidy, it becomes unsustainable.
Sure.
At some level.
So there, it's potential though.
For us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Um, there is potential then for uh, partnerships that could help with the subsidies um, for those more, well, truly affordable units, which I know you've done some of, Jamie. Um, and I think that um, I mean, if I'm wrong about this, I'm just remembering this from our discussion um, in the question sessions. But for those metro districts that are going to be like serving eighty percent of the AMI or below or thirty percent to eighty percent, there is the additional option to use other funding sources like our affordable housing funding coming down from the state to stack to then also subsidize, correct? Thank you.
Yeah. So we can certainly look in, just so you know, that's nothing we've ever done. We've been exhausting again to that most attainable point.
Yep.
And I think the partnership you're speaking to is the homes we're building for Habitat in Hope Springs in Greeley.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
Again, that's done in collaboration.
Right.
Partnership. They're the ones that have let all the subsidy component.
Yep.
We're providing the lowest building cost we can.
Totally.
To create the homes.
Yeah, there's no way a developer could pencil being able to build something at the rate that a partner like Habitat can sell it um, because of the partnerships. They're what?
They're a little slower to absorb sometimes, but I do have multiple district projects that have a habitat or a similar type of um, component. I, I have one that builds homes for veterans.
Mm hmm.
And so some of that is some part of the funding is donated.
Mm hmm.
Part of it's from the state, part of it's from federal. So.
Yep.
We, we do multiples for different reasons, not just um, you know, to split it up as
Sure.
different types of needs to.
If that's something that um, the rest of the board is interested in, I would love if we continue this discussion to learn more about the ones that you have existing already that have those um, provisions in place. And then um, also just considering um, how it might be possible to find space for.
So I.
Oh. Well. Yep. Yep. Um, I'm happy to put you in touch with the executive director at Fort Collins Habitat for Humanity, who would be serving us here.
Jamie's done some of that.
Yep. Okay, good.
You have a.
Yep. I'm a fan of Jamie.
Having Jamie here, he really brings a product that's attainable. Honestly, I cannot build a house at the same price as Jamie. He just has a different machine.
Mm hmm.
Um, and our machine's different than your machine.
Mm hmm.
And that's what makes this subdivision so good because we have multiple sites and different um, exposure and different product lines that we can bring in multiple builders, multiple types.
Yep.
Can all benefit with metrics.
Yep.
And and just as the example of, of a community, it's, it's our Liberty Draw community, which is our biggest one we're currently in. It's two hundred acres. It'll be thirteen hundred homes when it's all said and done. Um, and that has three different product lines. We build exclusively. There's no other builders in that particular community. But we start at three hundred thousand on a townhome, brand new townhome. Um, two bedroom, uh, two bath, two car garage. Um, it's eight hundred square feet, but it is a starter home.
Mm hmm.
At three hundred thousand. And you can't buy many homes around under four hundred thousand.
No, for sure.
Thousand. And so that's, that's the point we're trying to get to bringing that product to Wellington. Um, and then we have our alley load product and then we have a, a single family detached, no basement. And then that's where Darren picks up because he builds more of the semi custom, the bigger, you know, you talk executive housing. He can go, he can scale that product. So yeah, very complimentary, but really looking to bring a full breadth. Um, but the metro district component is, you know, for many reasons, a critical component to being able to deliver this community and those products within Wellington. Yep.
And but to add on to um, Larry's comments regarding that, it's, you know, a lot of those conversations actually come down to our development. And then Arlen just quotes how we determine uh, requirements.
I'm not, my microphone wasn't on. I'm sorry. Um, so in addition to, you know, the different products that you guys are offering and then the options to have different metro districts associated with those with different goals and um, that makes me really excited about this opportunity because it's not just a over across the board, everybody's paying so many mills off this and that. It's, you know, it's specific and customizable based off of each district's goals. Um, so I think there's a lot of opportunity there and a lot of oversight opportunities from our perspective based off of mills and the cap. So I'm really excited about that, but um, I've agreed with everything that's been discussed so far. And Davey had some great questions, Larry did too. So I appreciate that. So I won't go into those things again because I think you guys covered this well. But the comment I wanted to make was that this project is really important. Um, it's, it's not just important for the project itself and those kind of things. This, this project secures a future for the town of Wellington. Um, and we need, we have a lot of work to do on our side to make sure we have different funding mechanisms for our town in general. But until we get there, we need a steady stream of potential. And that's what this project brings with us over decades, right, that we're talking about. Um, so from my perspective, uh, given the situation, if there is a situation that we could choose or can usher, um, that makes us more successful um, and sustainable and making sure that everything looks and feels great over those decades. That it's, it's something that we need to do um, in order to secure, like I said, the future for Wellington. Because the, the fees that we are going to be collecting on these properties is really going to be a saving grace for our town. Um, and I don't, I don't think people realize how desperate we are when it comes to being able to get these fees associated with new development, new building. So um, from my perspective, if we were to provide direction, um, I think that we should absolutely move forward. And then if anything, from our board perspective, we should maybe create policy or make discussions in advance of any of these these plans that come back to us or, or how we pursue them as to maybe, you know, maximums or what, how we should treat these scenarios in the future, what our policy should be or what our thresholds might be. Um, that way now and lasting into the decades as this is going forward, we can have some resilience when it comes to the needs and wants of this board. So um, but I think it's necessary. I think we need to make sure that this project is as successful as possible.
Thank you.
Just to add to that comment too, because in you taking those steps, that actually helps the developer too. Because you provide us the clarity of what that looks like and create a path, you know, of knowns.
Yeah.
So anywhere a developer can remove unknowns is extremely helpful.
Yeah, I would hate for you to proceed with, you know, a blessing from this board and then a decade from now, get a different opinion and for that to be derailing in some sort for a different district. So um, I think that's important to provide uh, you guys some clarity as well as just, like you said, assurances to make sure you know that we want you here very much.
Development needs a lot to us too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
Time and be your devil's advocate again. Um, so mainly my questions come is honestly, I don't think it's my business to decide what you guys want to do with the development that you're doing. If a metro district is what is going to work and what our developers are comfortable with. I think I support the generalized idea. My state, my item comes from, I want to see the service plan. I want, that's my concern. It's not what you guys are doing with the land you've purchased and the homes you're building on there. Um, I'd like to see, as trustee Moyers stated, some kind of catches or clauses in there that support that AMI for affordable housing, not attainable, but affordable. Um, so if that's something that we can look at putting into there and having those discussions, I totally support that. Um, my concern comes in and here's the devil's advocate side. So statistics of sales on homes that are in metro district and how that impacts the income coming into Wellington in the next two years. So homes that sell in metro districts are statistically known to not sell as quick as homes available on the regular market without those additional taxes, the additional levies, items like that. What kind of impact are we looking at for as far as tap fees coming in? And how is that impact our projected numbers? Because we go off of budgets for building permits and how much we're going to allot and schedule. Um, that's the kind of impact I'm interested in knowing and understanding a little more about. Well, I would say that because how we do our budget, when we do our annual budget that we just approved tonight, we did our budget off of generalized ideas of how many building permits are going to happen this next year for certain accounts, the budget line items that we have. So what my idea is, is needing to know what that impact is going to have if those homes don't sell as quick because they are in a metro district. Because then that affects our side of budget numbers when you look at tap fees and other items like that. Um.
I think we won't have any tap and permit fees over the next two years anyway, because we'll be lucky to have lots ready till twenty twenty seven. And it says closing in twenty twenty eight.
Okay, so say five years. So that, that's my idea behind that is the understanding of those tap fees and how it would impact it if you see the decreased sales because it's a metro district.
No, I mean, Liberty Draw is a top three selling community in the state of Colorado. We're going to build a hundred and forty homes this year in a bad year uh, in Liberty Draw. And that's those three products. It's all about affordability. We are the most affordable home builder in Northern Colorado and we sell a lot of homes. Because there's a huge need is what it boils down to.
And your drop in tap fees or building permits is market driven. It's not builder driven. So you're seeing across the board, national builders are, are terminating contracts.
The market stinks right now.
And the market stinks. The interest rates aren't great.
Yeah.
Um, and affordability is a component, but there's also just the market doesn't have the capacity to serve all of the people that are out there. And a lot of people at those three percent mortgages, why would they refinance? Why would they move? So we have a generational change as well. And that is not um, that is not metro district driven. It is economy driven. And so your drop in tap fees or your drop in permits that are being pulled is across the board in every jurisdiction in every city, across the board.
No, so that's not what I'm saying. My, okay, so my question is, is when you look at, so if there is open availability for say, a home that's not in a metro district that's for sale in town and one that is in a metro district that's for sale in a metro district. The, from what I have gathered from realtors and asking around, yep, so they often will take the not the one with a higher mill levy, not the one with higher taxes. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's not a matter of, I'm not saying that there's a reason this is happening and why we're not pulling in so many permits or fees. What I'm saying is, is when you're not building to a lot of homes and permit fees are not getting pulled, that's what I'm asking is what's that impact on our annual budget? If we only have, because then when we have you as our only developer that owns a. that owns a lot of the acreage around Wellington. So if you're looking to establish metro districts, then are we going to see a decrease in want and need for people to move to an area where they're only going to be able to secure a metro district home?
So, well, let me, can I do?
I, I.
Okay, I didn't interrupt any of you guys when you were asking questions.
I'm just, I'm just uh, stating something here as, as the leader of the meeting. Um, I think your question about metro districts affecting sales of homes or if they're going to choose a metro district over another home for sale is kind of a mute point because we have a housing shortage, there's not that many homes that are on the market available over new builds. So I don't see as though that necessarily affects our region, but I'll leave it to the experts.
I'll, I'll just give you the simple example of if I, if we were building our same townhome product, right? We're selling it for three hundred thousand in a metro district in Liberty Draw. If I built the same product in a non-metro district, an HOA community literally across the street, I would have to sell it for three fifteen. Now, and, and at that point, you're in apples to apples comparison. We're truly selling the same home, which is a hard measure of the general real estate market because really no two, uh, no two homes are probably the same. Um, I mean, that's not true. There's other production builders, so, and I have not done that comparison. So the only comparison I can give you is I do know the numbers for us to produce one of our homes and our, and that ten to fifteen thousand we spoke about on the lot cost shows up in this sale price. So I'm either going to be able to sell it for three hundred thousand in a metro or three fifteen without. In the end, what matters is the payment. And the payment does take into account the, the taxes, it's P I T I, right? The taxes are the T. So it's the total payment. In the end, if it were damaging to the consumer, why in the world would I do it? And so that's part of our walk. If we thought that would damage our ability to absorb the homes we're going to build, this would be, we wouldn't not be here. Um, but yeah, we've, and, and it's, this isn't new to us because this is that fourth one. For you, it is new, so.
Yeah, and I mean, metro districts are not new to me, but as a builder, I think some developers in the past got greedy.
Mm hmm.
That doesn't make sense for us to be a carnivore of our own, uh, her own subdivision. I think if we build a community that is um, highly wanted, desired, has great amenities, um, we will sell homes. Right now, I can't sell a home to save my life. I mean, the market is that bad, yet Jamie's selling homes for three hundred and ninety thousand in Sage Meadows. I just wrote a contract for over seven hundred for one. You know, it's just, it's a weird market right now. But if we build a great product, great subdivision, and we can maintain that subdivision with the metro district with enforcement, compared to guys, I gotta tell you, in Sage Meadows, I can't control the first four phases. I mean, it's out of control. There's no enforcement. There's trailers everywhere, no one obeys by the rules. And so if we're going to do this long-term project, Sage Farms, I want to make sure we can maintain covenants through the project. And to me, that's, makes a desirable neighborhood too, to move into. And not having Joe Blow paint their house pink or having trailers and loud music out there. We won't make it through this whole site in twenty years. And so we really need that enforcement. And that's kind of where I started with the metro district, why I pursued it. And now if we do it right, we can have a great project and make attainable housing, and that's what we're shooting for. Um, you know, and we got to show you that we can do it and show the community that we can do it over the next ten or twenty years. And that's kind of why we're asking the direction, is this a tool that we can use um, to bring our project forward? So.
And, and ultimately, it's the consumer's choice.
Yeah.
If they don't want to be in a metro district, they don't have to be. They can choose another subdivision and another house. There are other builders and there are other projects that don't have metro districts. I just know that there's almost three thousand special districts in the state of Colorado, and it's hard to now build a development without them. Cause the cost of capital and the cost um, to the developer is so high. Without them, they are at a competitive disadvantage. And I'm not saying you need to do it for every single project. It's just they're at a competitive disadvantage to the people who don't use them.
Hmm. People are more knowledgeable in metro districts.
Oh, and they, they know.
People didn't know anything about them five, seven years ago.
And there's, I, I, when we're talking about disclosures, it's up, down, sideways. There's four different disclosures that we're required to provide. And three of them are recorded against the property. So whether or not they know they're in a metro district is not a question anymore.
Right. Well, so, and my other question was the financeability. Um, I won't ask any more of my questions. Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, sounds good. Trustee Ken.
Well, thank you. I'm not sold yet, okay? Uh, I do have experience with metro districts, you know, and I've um, I understand where you're coming from and appreciate everything you're presenting here. Darren, I've known you for eight years. Well, eight years that, that I can remember, eight and a half maybe, but, but you've always been fair, you've always been honest. Uh, I have tremendous respect for you. Um, never worked with Bessler, uh, but I've heard some wonderful things about you. Um, my concerns are more about some of the, the structure and the flow and um, you know, for example, you, it is, it is a separate form of government. It's a Title thirty-two form of government. The only time Wellington, this board of trustees has a voice in that is approving or disapproving the service plan, period. That's it. Once you approve that, we don't have a voice again until they come back to the hand and say, we want to modify the service agreement. So it's, it's a separate government. We have, you know, we, we might be able to review things, but we, we can't influence what happens within the metro district because it's like us telling, to tell, to tell the fire district how they should, you know, repair their, their trucks or something. Um, I do know that metro districts will have a board, but you have to have residents in there. So the first several years, several years, um, the board is the developer essentially making all the decisions about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Uh, and the accountability is not quite there because there's no one to answer to. I also know that the funding for developers, um, you know, if the developer is putting some of those advances in, or if the developer is, is in a position where he's putting up some upfront cost, where there's like typically it's called a construction loan for that. Um, I do know that, that they are authorized to return, to get interest on that. And I think it's around eight percent interest of what, it depends, but my, from my experience, it's been around eight percent interest. So the developers are getting money on the money they invest back and forth, plus selling the houses and so forth. Uh, look, this isn't a critique against you. This is just my observations from metro districts, property owners. I'm more concerned about property owners because I've had rooms full of property owners talking to the board of trustees or, or city council about issues they have with the metro district and, and the town can do nothing except listen to their complaints and say, sorry, we, it's out of our hands, there's nothing we can do. But these property owners could pay fifty to sixty-five and a half or sixty-six and a half mills uh, until the debt is paid off. That includes the bonds and the construction loans, plus that interest rate that's coming up there. Until it's retired and that can take twenty, thirty years. And then it can continue on if there's ongoing maintenance and so forth like that. So it's, it's an ongoing uh, burden on the property owners that they're going to be paying. And we have enough inequalities in, in what people pay within, within our town. If you live in a, a district with potable water, you're going to pay more for your water than people with non-potable irrigation and so forth. And now we're going to be setting up, well, you're going to pay more in property taxes over here than people right next door to you here. So there's some concerns I have about, about that added burden of, of the, of the mill levy placed on those properties. Um, I am a little concerned, um, and I'm not so sure that that the town needs this development to secure our future. And I, and I know that's directly in, in contradiction to what, to what trustee Daly said, but um, you know, the funds that come in from this are impact fees and use fees and so forth. And I've gone on record before saying that use, use taxes on those, on those construction uh, building materials and so forth is not sustainable. It's not, it's not a steady form of, of revenue that we need to be finding different ways to bring revenues in. So for me, building more houses just for the, we get impact fees and, and use taxes doesn't make sense. Uh, because we shouldn't have to depend on those. Now, I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent against it, you know? Uh, but I am saying that I've got a lot of reservations and I appreciate everything that you've talked about with it, where you can layer different mill levies for different housing products. That has some appeal to it as well. Um, but again, I think about the long-term impact of the metro district. And the town has been adverse to metro districts for, forever. I mean, forever. We did have one metro district that never got built that the town approved. And, and I knew the board at the time was just hateful at the previous boards who approved that metro district. So metro districts have some benefits and the benefits are mostly in the, in the hands of the developers at the end of the day. So, okay.
I can address some of those.
Well, when I'm done, you can address that all you'd like. So all I'm saying is that I am not sold on it yet. You know, but I'm trying to keep as open mind as I can on this. Uh, but I have a lot of reservations. Thank you.
Yeah. So just to start with, who's the true beneficiary of this? And I would, I would completely flip that over. It is absolutely the citizens. Three out of the four points I made are actually about the citizens and the long-term health of that community within Wellington. And so you talk about the future finance. From a financing perspective, that's really the big thing for a developer to create the initial community. That is the biggest benefit we, you know, we gain from that. It gives us the ability to fund it. Beyond that though, it still contains a funding mechanism again for that twenty years down the road, thirty years down the road, and that community wants to replace park structures or want to do, put in a pickleball court. Like they have a funding mechanism to add these additional amenities within their community to their choosing because it's their board, right? Um, again, the tax deductibility in the mills, so like the cost of it is a trade-off in purchase price. And the other half of that is then the HOA fee, because every other community that doesn't have a metro district generally has an HOA fee. And so you're going to pay the fee one way or another to maintain your community. That's there either way. This just creates through a taxi, a tax deductible um, avenue that also, again, because of the shift in state law in just the last five years, I mean, this is pretty recent, that is incredibly detrimental to an HOA. You can't force collection of those fees. There's no way to lien a property. Like the only way you get paid is if they sell their property. And so even the collection of fees to maintain a healthy community financially is severely burdened with a traditional HOA now. Along with all the enforcement, which again, if it's not enforced there, they're calling you. Um, it's the only other line that they can call. So that's again, it, it actually creates a buffer and gives the, the community truly the mechanisms it needs to maintain a great community. I'd propose it's more on the citizen benefit than us. For us, it's the creation of the community. Everything about it from then on is really about the citizens and them being able to really dictate the health of their community. But, yeah.
So I, I have, I have a couple of additional comments. Um, so you do have oversight from a town perspective. Yes, it's an independent local government, but we have annual reporting requirements where we're required to give you copies of our budgets and audits. We are required to file those budgets and audits with the state. Um, we have statutory compliance requirements. There are also, as Jamie has indicated, there have been um, some additional legislation thing. There's one that was passed under House Bill twenty-five twelve nineteen that was effective August first. And the name of the bill is mandatory district disclosures, better understanding of metropolitan districts. And under that statutory provision, we are supposed to and are required to provide information on public improvements and services by the district. A general disclosure and common questions has to be recorded against the property for any residential and property, which includes descriptions of the aggregate mill levy, um, both the annual meeting notices and all transparency requirements. We have to have annual meetings and self-nomination and acceptance forms. So we have to provide not only access, we have to provide postcard notice to every resident in that district of their availability and ability to run for those boards of directors. Um, we have to do mail and postcard notices for all of those things. Um, we have website transparency requirements, public improvements and services that are being provided, all that's disclosed to them. In addition, um, most of the debt on service plans and most of the service plans that I've drafted have a timeout. So there's a time limit in addition to a maximum mill levy, um, and a cap on the maximum debt. There's also a time requirement. So typically, and under state law, we cannot exceed forty years from the time of the organization of the district for any debt service mill levy to be imposed. And at the end of that term, so contrary to your belief that the developer is the only one that benefits, at the end of that term, it's discharged. It doesn't go on forever. It's discharged. And just like a house mortgage, those thirty-year bonds, those things also time out. So it's on the developer and the builder to get that additional assessed valuation to pay those bonds. But these are limited tax general obligation bonds. So only the mill levy is there and available to pay those bonds. If there's one house that's built, it's the same mill levy. If there's a thousand houses built, it's the same mill levy. And that's the only mon- money that's available to pay that debt. So all the risk initially is on the builder and the developer. Ultimately, it's on the bondholder out in the public market, but there's only a mill levy that's available to pay that debt. If there's not any money and it doesn't pay off in the term that's provided, it's discharged. Now, there is an ability to refinance and, but like I indicated, those abilities to refinance are typically resident-driven because there has to be a net present interest savings. And sometimes in some jurisdictions, what they'll do and what I've seen is a resident board has to decide on that refinance in order to make that refinance possible. But in order for us and, and as additional incentive, what we've done in districts is that resident board, you have to prove a net present interest savings, majority of the board members that are voting for that debt, and that refinance of that have to be residents. Now, that's not feasible on the first probably three to five years because you won't have, from a construction standpoint, you're not going to have an approved plat, sold and constructed lots or any residences for at least two years. From the date that you start the development process and get it a plat approval to the date you're actually constructing a house, minimum year to two years. After that, um, before you have residents that are actually serving on boards of directors, you're correct. Not a lot of people will run for that board of directors, but the minute you have a problem in the neighborhood, there's trash problems, there's watering problems, the, the green belts aren't green, you're going to have a flood of people running for that board of directors. And those residents will have their voice heard. These are representative governments. And so that community will be run by residents at some point in time. So it is not just a benefit to the developers. And regardless of whatever is incurred as far as costs, there's a finite amount of capacity in a metro district. And a residential development can only finance between twenty-five and forty-five percent of their project, of their public improvement costs. It's just not feasible to issue debt beyond what the market can bear. And that's based on a financial pro forma that's provided just like it would out to the bond market, that'll determine what the capacity of the district is, regardless of the mill levy cap and regardless of the debt limit. There's just a finite ability to issue debt. And it's out to the mo- market, it's, it's tax exempt in order to issue it. And if the market can't bear it and we can't justify the feasibility of issuing the bonds and the ability to pay off those, those bonds and that debt, it's not going to sell on the market and bonds won't be issued. So the market is the true driver of both the development and the financing of any public improvements.
We didn't mean to get this deep in the weeds, but hopefully it helps out with David.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the board. Lots, lots of great questions here tonight. I'm going to start with a couple of easy ones and we'll get progressively more difficult, I suppose. So, uh, let's see, uh, I already know, I think the answer to the two of these, uh, uh, the mill levy component is, uh, in fact, collected by the state, correct? We would not need additional staffing as far as collecting that, and it would be remitted to the metro district, or I apologize, yes, the county. Okay, thank you for that. Um, as far as the, any increase to the mill levy, uh, it would in fact be voted on the homeowners that are living within that district, not just the board of directors.
The initial is, the initial is voted by, and it's, it's the function of how the districts are done. So the voters are the taxpaying electors within the district. Initially, that's the property owner or the developer.
Sure, sure.
Those voters change over time.
Right, as, as the board becomes residents, that, that vote would then go to the resident as far as future increases go and that sort of thing, right? Okay, okay.
But again, increases only up to the service plan cap.
Understood, understood, and, and fully, fully get that.
And approved by you guys as the board.
Understood.
You put the handlebar.
Understood. Um, okay, uh, let's see. Ultimately, if a metro district was to default on its debt obligations, who is responsible for that?
So, um, with limited tax general obligation debt, there's underperforming bonds and then there's defaulting bonds. So underperforming bond would be something that on the financial pro forma, they projected that it would build out like this.
Sure.
But truly, the only mill levy and the only revenue that's available is the debt service mill levy on the. But truly, the only mill levy and the only revenue that's available is the debt service mill levy on the assessed valuation in the property boundaries of that district. If it doesn't pay off, it doesn't pay off. So a lot of times their financial pro forma, just like a mortgage, will be interest-only in the first couple of years. There is also a requirement when it's out to the public, there's a requirement that there's a principal and interest reserve for probably the first three years so they can make those payments without having to, and you can't increase the mill levy at all. So there's a principal and interest reserve that takes from your net proceeds of any bond issuance. But at the end of the term, that's it.
So ultimately, I think the short answer, right, is the bondholders.
The bondholders.
Sure.
But I mean, there's always an ability to refinance and initial debt is more expensive, just like construction loans are more expensive. As you get creditworthiness, both for them and for the district, as you get creditworthiness in the market and for both the district and the developer, you're gonna get a lower cost of your money. So they'll give you a better interest rate, a lower interest rate, and you've got equity. So as the assessed valuation goes up, that's your equity.
Understood. Appreciate the explanation on that. Yeah. Let's see. Well, one of the items you had mentioned, and this is more of a just kind of a functional question for my knowledge. You had mentioned that this could potentially be multiple metro districts and the idea would be to consolidate down the, consolidate those into a single one down the road, just, just theoretically speaking. If the mill levy rate has already been separate, separate, right, is a different assessed rate between those different metro districts, how is that reconciled?
Typically in a consolidation, so I've done three this last year. So typically consolidation will happen when the districts are built out and it's resident-controlled or getting close. So the developer will usually at that point in time, so you're concerned about outstanding debt that'll stay out there forever. Usually it's an incentive for the developer to close it out. You're not gonna get paid back. This is in the way that I phrased it, and it doesn't work for every district. At the point in time where we're able to refinance and consolidate these districts, we will go out and get an independent financial opinion of somebody other than us that will say, this is your capacity on a refinance. Everything above and beyond, we had a, a debt forgiveness resolution where that developer agreed to discharge the additional debt on the bonds that's outstanding in exchange for them going out to market and saying, this is the capacity now on consolidation and refinance. That's it. And they got rid of nine million dollars of debt. They lowered the mill levy eleven mills. They saved seven hundred thousand dollars in interest in one district. And the residents were able to change from a fee structure where they were having to impose fees in order to operate. So your HOA scenario, they switched it to an operations mill levy that was tax deductible and were able to, the first year, half their fee, the second year, half it again.
Sure.
So sometimes you need to have fees just to operate, but it went from a thousand dollars to two fifty in two years.
Sure. And I, I certainly understand that. Obviously, the goal of to refinance is to, to bring those numbers down. But I guess what I'm more of the question is, have you ever run into a situation where you've got Metro District A and Metro District B, and this one's got a higher mill levy and this one's got a lower mill levy? And then this one ends up having to pay a higher level mill levy?
Usually you're not doing that in a multifamily versus a single family where you're doing that in that community that did that particular one. I've had three of them.
Sure.
They were all single-family homes and the mill levy had equalized. So they were within a delta of about two mills.
Okay.
And the reason why there was a delta is timing of when that mill levy started.
Sure.
And adjustments. And then some of the development had been sold to other builders, but it had not fully developed. So there were still lots to be developed, but they had all been sold. So there were no more developer lots. They were all builder lots at that point in time. There was a variation on the mill levies. And when you consolidate, you take the consolidated mill levy for the whole thing, which is usually lower overall, and it will equalize anyway. Because it's the same mill across the different districts. It's just at a different rate whether the lots, which are taxed at commercial or there's actually houses. So that was the variation on the mill levy, but it will equalize and it'll have one uniform mill levy across all of the districts.
Understood. And just one more clarified question on that. And again, I apologize for getting the weed on this particular item. But do you, when those districts are consolidated, do those homeowners have the opportunity to vote on that? I'm just curious. Okay.
The consolidation is required to be voted in each one of the districts.
Okay.
So all the residents have to pass by a majority vote. On the boards offer the resolution, but each board has an election and that election is of the residents. So those residents have to, a majority of them has to vote for the consolidation. And a majority also make up the board of directors. So that consolidated board is also a representative board of each one of those districts.
Sure, sure.
So consolidated board, consolidation election. If it didn't pass in all of them, it didn't happen.
Understood. Okay. Mr. Roberson, one question for you, I think I've got, is one of the items you had discussed was enforcement of, well, HOAs obviously have a set of covenants and these things generally are, are or are not enforced based off the, anyway, obviously, part of your goal here is to leverage the metro district to be able to enforce some of these things. One of the questions I have is as far as the town of Wellington's watering guidelines that we pass every year. The, the guidelines are set that way so that residents cannot be fined in the event that their lawns turn brown. As long as they're watering within the guidelines set by the town of Wellington and they cannot be subject to fines by HOAs. I'm curious if that's different for metro districts or?
But non-pots, I'm wondering why they want to turn it brown.
Yeah, and, and.
Well, that's a fair point. However, the guidelines still in fact apply to non-pot areas, do they not? Am I wrong?
The guidelines are for people that are on our treated waters.
Just potable? Okay, okay. Maybe that's a moot point then. So other than that. I'd have to look up the resolution. I don't remember.
I think they had to post it to like, yeah, they're using non-pot.
It, it mentions specifically potable water, though, this last semester.
It does. Okay. And that's fine.
Good question.
And the community.
Neuralscape. I mean, things still is Neuralscape.
Yeah, I understood. I was, I was just more concerned that if, if the guidelines were in effect for potable systems and users were in fact watering within those guidelines, that they would not get fined would be the, would be the concern. But again, if the resolution says that it's only applies to potable systems, then I think it's not really, really a question for you.
The problem with the non-pot system is people try to water every day.
Yep.
And, and that's probably the biggest problem we run into. I mean, there's people in sage metals that haven't changed their clock and they're walking, watering three times a day, seven days a week, everything down the gutter. And that's the stuff we're enforcing there in sage metals.
And, and there's ways to handle that. And it depends. I mean, the most expensive way is to meter every lot.
We metered every lot in sage metals.
And, and metering every lot, you'd have watering days. So what we do in a lot of our communities is I've numbered houses, water on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and even numbers go on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And you have watering windows. And if you're watering outside of that window, you get a notice, you get a violation, you can stop it or you get fined.
Sure, sure.
And that's important for the district to manage. So one thing we really didn't speak to, maybe it's not clear, but one of the infrastructure components that is, is the non-pot system itself. All of the infrastructure that we're putting in, which is a huge benefit to the town and the town's potable water structure because you remove that seasonal peak that you have to design all your equipment for, that now it's twelve months, same amount of flow for that entire community. So that's a huge capacity component to your water system.
Sure.
And, and then with that, though, it's still, the system is designed for, you know, to deliver a certain amount of water every day. Right? So it's important that we manage, the district manages the days too, no different really than the town does.
Yep, totally makes sense. Totally makes sense. Appreciate that explanation. Just one final question for you, and that is, if, so obviously, what's, you know, twenty, thirty years out, once all the bond debt's paid off and that sort of thing. If, if the metro district was to be dissolved or whatever at that point, how does maintenance for those public spaces come into? Obviously, somebody's gotta pay for that at some point. So who?
Yeah, there'd, there'd still be fees in order to get that, but or a mill levy. And, and a lot of times the district, so dissolution usually occurs when everything's taken care of. So the debt has to be addressed and the operations has to be addressed. And that means it either goes to a property owners association or it goes to the town. And if the town's not willing to do that, that district would stay in existence to do the non-pot.
Okay.
If that's the only purpose of the district.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure like it wasn't gonna go away and just not get maintained and that sort of thing. So I think that answers the question really for me.
And it would become the district's responsibility. So you define your development plan or your plat. Which of these things are going to be constructed by whom and which one's going to be owned, operated, maintained? So we usually put two columns in our plats when they let me. The plat will have, this is the party that constructs it. This is the party that we're intending on operating, maintaining it. And the operation and maintenance kicks in once it's dedicated over to that entity.
Okay.
Town doesn't have responsibility until the warranty's done. District doesn't have responsibility until it's dedicated and accepted. And so it's got to cover the warranty just like it would for a street.
Sure.
And the same thing would happen for a metro district.
Excellent. Appreciate the answers.
And, and in the same sense that you wouldn't take something that's not to your standards, the district also wouldn't take something that's not to their standards. You have to be ready, willing and able to provide service. So that means water's available, the system's available, and there's enough financing in order to make sure that that's covered and paid for. Same as the town.
Great, thank you.
Just for clarity with that, correct me if I'm wrong, David. But again, there's really two major components to the district we're proposing. There's an operations and maintenance, an O and M component, and then there's the debt component. And so the debt component going away still leaves the operations and maintenance component in place. And, and generally, you wouldn't dissolve the district because you want that for the longevity of the community.
And, and we'd have a town IGA that would cover both and then separate it out. On future years when we amended it and when there wasn't a debt component to the district, we would continue to have updates to our town IGA to address those operational concerns of the town and the district.
Awesome. Thank you.
Tristan Daly.
I don't know how many years ago this was, so excuse me if you guys are all here for this, but over the years, they all blend together. But at one point, there was a HOA that came to the board and they had grossly undercharged their residents for since forever. And then they had a major critical problem. Okay, I was trying not to give too many details, but apparently everybody knows, everybody knows. But, and they asked us to help them and kind of bail them out. And our answer was, that's your obligation. We're not doing that. So that was just one example of something happened and that, that would be, you know, a more, we would have more rights to say something to that extent in these scenarios because it really isn't our obligation. So that, a situation like that has happened. I just want to say that historically, and that was an HOA. And we, we let them know it's not our obligation. So that's something that's come up. I want to remind us of that scenario. The other thing that I would want is if, based on the, the board decision and the direction that we're providing, I would like to know all the best practices or controls that are possible associated with creating the service plan initially. What controls we have, what other considerations within there outside of those three things that we are considering, the time, cap and mills? So what beyond those things within the service plan are things that we can control or not, or what's possible? Also, with that said, when in, it does come to an IGA between the town and the district, similar kind of scenario, what are the best practices or what can we do in advance so we don't have to worry about, you know, we have no control about what's going on because they're just operating within the service plan? So how do we set those up initially to make sure they're where we want them to be? So that's, that would be my direction to staff to move forward. I'm not saying we're giving you all thumbs up on a metro district, but for us to be able to make, I think, a decision, we want to know, based on what I'm hearing from the, the board, we want to know what controls are in place and how we can properly set it up just to make sure. The goal is to make it affordable, right? That everybody has said that so far. Is, is it, is it affordable for the residents from now and in the future? Is affordable for the business owners now and in the future for this commercial property? So if that's our main concern and question, keeping that aside, affordability over the long term and initially, you know, what are those things that we can do to control that? That would be my recommendation to the staff if we were to move forward or if that was something that we were agreed on.
And typically, I'll include a, a sample form of a town IGA. And, and that form of IGA will, will hit some of the main points. But it's always, I always draft it, so it's always subject to those changes that the town attorney recommends prior to final approval. The form of IGA can't be executed by the district till it's formed.
Yeah.
So we gotta go through an election, but I always say that the first opportunity after formation, the district will approve a form of IGA that's acceptable. That's a form of it attached to the service plan and that it's acceptable to the town attorney.
Great.
With such modifications that he uses.
Okay. And then the last point I was gonna make is questions on landscaping and all those things. Again, that, that is controllable one hundred percent within our board, not within this process, but within our development plans. So if we were to choose to change our, our landscaping requirements, we are absolutely welcome to do that. And that could be required within the development plans. That has nothing to do with a specific metro district apart. That's our development agreements and that they are subject to meeting all those development agreements and all of our requirements regardless. So all the questions about, you know, how it's developed and, and those requirements, we control that. We can change menus. We can change our development plans. So that's a completely separate issue. But that is a very important issue that I think we should acknowledge regardless because metro districts or not, we need to set our residents up for success for watering, right? So we should, we should really, I, I mean, we've already talked about approaching that. So maybe do that aggressively as part of that too. So.
Well, and remember, approval of a service plan doesn't mean that you approve the development plan.
Correct.
So you have ultimate control.
I hope everybody is.
Regardless of whatever you authorize us to do, you always have control over the development.
Yeah.
You always have control over what's going to be constructed. And all of our development, all of those public improvements, even if they are financed by a metro district, have to meet your approval. And those development plans, those subdivision improvement agreements, the development plans, the plats, all of that still has to meet your town code. And you get a second bite at the apple. So that's not a district issue. It's a developer issue.
Right.
But we always put clear indications in our service plan that none of this is an approval of a development plan.
Good.
And it's always subject to the approved development plans approved by the town.
Wonderful. You said something that scared me and that was fee and?
Yeah. So we're, we're allowed as a metro district under statutory provision, I can provide that to you, to charge fees, tools, charges and other things that are allowed to be assessed and collected by the district. Those fees, just like a town fee, they have to be, and the standard is rationally related to a legitimate public purpose. Those things are only allowed to the extent that the town allows those. So we can be required to perform and provide for certain forms of those fees that are allowed and have to come back to the town for approval of anything outside of that. Typically, what I will see, O and M fees are usually charged in the early years as a bridge until the assessed valuation catches up.
Right.
So a lot of my developers will set a high limit. They'll, they'll say five hundred dollars a lot we can charge for O and M fee. This year's O and M fee is zero because there's nothing to construct and nothing to, to operate. And it goes down. They have the ability to do it within the corner, four corners of the service plan. They don't have the obligation to assess it and collect it, but it's only there to the extent that the operations justifies it and, and to the extent that the budget is approved.
Okay, add that one to my list, please, of, of require, or thresholds on fees.
And I'll just state in the fore that we have, we don't have any additional fees.
And he doesn't.
That's good, no.
So Jamie doesn't do it.
You just said a couple of times.
But I do in, I do in other districts and it's, so sometimes you'll have a capital improvement fee or an irrigation system tap fee or some of the components of a non-pot system I've had in different districts and it depends on the development. They needed to build an, an entire pond and a developer was willing to do that in order to offset it and in order to, to make it equal for everybody. They had an irrigation system tap fee per lot, but that was absorbed by the builder.
It was paid by the builder.
Because the builder built the pond and the, the non-pot system. So they took the equivalent of whatever that fee would have been, spread it out among a number of lots that they're taking down, and they paid for that. And so that fee disappeared for them, but we don't know what's gonna happen on future phases or if it's gonna be a different builder. So we have the ability to assess something like that to cover the costs of the non-pot system.
Yeah.
And the metering, if we're doing metered per lot.
Kind of like when we did sage metals, we turned that seventeen fifty in the development agreement.
That's exactly what we did.
And the builders passed it on the home buyer closely.
Yep. And we did the same thing in a bunch of different projects.
Okay.
Sometimes there's enough of a mass of the development to cover all of the costs, but sometimes there's not. So they do that and, and they'll provide it as an incentive to a builder. Okay, we've got this fee, but you know, we're gonna help pay for it or we're gonna pay for half of it, whatever the negotiation with these guys. That's their decision to make, but we. That's their decision to make, but we provide for the ability to do it to make sure that that system gets built.
Okay.
And if Jamie's already building it for his section, there's no need to do fees and he historically doesn't do that.
That really helps me understand. Thank you.
Yep. But a different builder or a national builder might be different. What I usually see from like a Richmond is we're okay with this mill levy and we're okay with this fee. This is all we're willing to pay on this particular development and it's different for every builder.
Okay.
Jamie, I, and I've worked with Jamie for a number of years, he doesn't do that. So from, from a builder perspective, I can tell you, he's different than other builders because he doesn't do it the same way. And he is delivering a product and an end price that is very clear to his end users. So there's no surprises.
I think the difference is if we were developers, we'd want to charge one fee. We're both builders. Again, we can mobilize ourselves.
Okay.
If we overcharge in fees.
I'm thinking, I was thinking it was an HOA fee and, HOA fee and it was this. Okay. So that's where I was going, but you guys really cleared that up for me.
And it's very specific to a certain type of improvement. If we're building a non-pot system that's going to be completely district wide. It's like an impact.
Yeah.
That's how.
Yeah.
And that's how they diffuse the cost of that system.
Yeah.
Over time.
I mean, I would imagine you guys are subject to like house bill 25, 10, 18 for consumers where every cost has to be clearly stated, right? Okay. Um, trustee Moore?
Um, so trustee Teets' questions got me thinking and I just, if I'm wrong, please let me know that. I did a quick Google search on my idea and who knows who's on the other end of that, but they agreed with me. Because you have funding available upfront for infrastructure, it makes it easier for you to expedite the permitting and fee payment process. So the development of lots, right? So if, if I was hearing your question correctly, the concern was what's the fiscal impact? If any, on the town, um, in relation to the fees. Sure.
Like fear of the metro district or something?
Well, and so I appreciate that and understand that, but it got me on the, the impact and tap fee spiral.
Those are two different things.
Right. But having the capital upfront would make it easier.
Yes.
To pull permits in, I don't want to say bulk, but yeah, work on multiple lots at multiple times. So like for our budget, that could be highly beneficial.
I'm not, I think there's a little bit of confusion though, because the metro district funding is a reimbursement to the developer to build the lot. Not the home builder on anything they do. And when you pull the permit on the house, that's when the impact fees get paid.
Okay.
Home builder. Yep. Totally separate from.
Okay. So you being both doesn't.
Not.
Okay.
It's still, we're still, we still wear two hats.
Right.
We do, we do wear two different hats. They're two totally different.
But typically those impact fees are paid when you pull, pull a permit.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So it's different than the construction, the infrastructure.
Ready to sell to other builders quicker so that permits can be pulled, not help cover the, so that was my.
And, and there's, remember there's two impacts. So there's a town mill levy. And there's town fees. So there's two sources of revenue that comes in.
Right.
The impact fees come when they pull a building permit.
Yep.
But the, the mill levy of the town is based on the same mill levy. So you can take our financing plan for what our assessed valuation and projections are going to be and plug in the town mill levy as well. And you'll see what the revenue over time to the town would be as well. And granted, it's for operation purposes and for your own maintenance purposes, but that is a, that's a delta that you are also considering when you're talking about no development versus development in the district. When you build those houses, there's also a revenue component for the town mill levy that covers your operations, just like that operation mill levy would cover the district operations.
Trusty Moore, I'm picking up what you're putting down though. I'm, I, you know, it would increase the speed of development, which is. It reduces the timeline, absolutely. And then I do still think in my brain, it makes sense that having this capital and having this expedited process sort of without having to wait on the banks and all of that, like could increase permits that are pulled or the timing of, right, exactly.
And the marketability of the project.
Yeah.
So the access to public financing for, for banks or out to the market makes the project more marketable. So for the same reason they have to sell it to the market, they have to sell it to the bondholders or potential bondholders.
Yeah.
So that marketing is sometimes done at the same time.
That makes sense. Um, the average list price for a home in Larimer County right now, as of October, is And then it sells for 560 is the median sale price, 560, 260. So just to be able to offer a home at 300, 315,000 is bonkers. So kudos to you. That's Larimer County.
We're, we're.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
My numbers were welded.
And houses are, which is more in weld. Yeah. Than they are in Larimer.
Well, seem to be much different on that out on A.
We can't hit 300 right now.
No, but I mean.
But that's, again, that's why we'll be here continuing to work with y'all on all of these spots, right? Cause all of these are $2,000 a door here, 5,000 there, 3,500 there. It's just, it's, it's kind of crazy how all of these things add up. But that is the path that we walk with communities to create the most valuable community we can, which if we have the most valuable community, I can build the most valuable home.
We'll support.
Yeah.
And you're not making a decision now on that district. You're just deciding whether you want more information with them.
Right.
Right.
Everybody's tired tonight. We just need direction because this will be a lot of work on town staff and on us to bring something forward to you.
Perfect.
So that's, that's.
I'm, I'm, uh, Mr. Bird, you were going to present us with questions for direction?
We weren't supposed to go deep, but we went deep. Sorry, Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and truthfully, thank you, Mayor and Board. The questions that we had posed in the, in the slide presentation were intended to provide a spark to provoke. You need to provide some level of guidance back to gentlemen here tonight and to your staff. For the, and I, we can go through these. I feel honestly that we've gotten the direction for all but one of those questions. The one question that we had been kind of posed was, well, the, the questions were, do you want more information on metro districts? And I feel like we've heard that's a yes. Do you want to continue the conversation around metro districts for the Sage Farms PUD? And I feel like the guidance was yes. The third question is one that I would like a little bit of guidance on. Um, and that's right now, a lot of the conversation's been around a specific development project. Do you want staff to be evaluating that development project and its specific attributes? Or do you want us to bring back a policy framework for metro districts as a whole? For any new proposal that may want to have a metro district to have guiding principles for what Wellington will consider?
That's what I want. That's what I want.
And the, the two could go parallel, right? So that we don't slow down a specific consideration, but there's, as we're learning from that project, we may want to also create policy documents that inform how other metro districts might be considered. Is that a fair?
Use this as your test case. Well, I, that's actually the point I was saying, I, I, don't get me wrong. I think we should absolutely have a policy for this going down the road, but my, I, what I would maybe propose, I don't, I would use this as a test case and, and run it through personally and, uh, use that as the basis to establish our broader policy down the road. What I would want to see is town staff spend a whole boatload of time on some policy framework that, you know, we're going to be going down the path to do this anyway. We can use that as a test case and make policy from there. Would be my suggestion, but.
Trustee Teets?
So my question would be is, is metropolitan districts are very specific to the area that they are working in? So to develop a policy framework that goes broad scope when we know metropolitan districts are their own entity by themselves, even if you're looking at commercial multifamily and single family. I think that having the town staff do broad scope investigation is going to waste a lot of time because we will address every single service agreement that comes back and it might look completely different every single time it comes back to us. I don't know if I want a whole framework for it because it's so specific to a development. And who knows, we might decide, I mean, we have one metro district already that's been here for years that never got built out. We have, and I've lived here while I was the second home in Buffalo Creek. So lived here a while. That is, I'm telling you, 20 plus years and we've never seen another request for a metro district come in. So I would hate to waste a lot of town staff time on something that is very, very specific towards the area it's being utilized for.
I, I, I agree with everything you're saying and, and I've worked with Mr. O'Leary when I was in Windsor when just starting the metro district process and creating the, the templates for the service plans and things like that. So I, I like the idea of, of this being that test case. Let's, and let's create that service plan. Let's see what it looks like. And we can use, maybe use that as part of the template and not necessarily a policy document, but something that we can, um, use moving forward. But, um, I would wholly recommend moving forward as trustee Teets has mentioned.
I disagree.
Okay.
All right. And, and Windsor's a good example because Windsor's got what 500 metro districts or something? I know I'm exaggerating, but, but it's, they're all over the place and they had to learn by doing. So there's good examples out there from communities of a basic framework of the questions you should be asking. Not necessarily, you know, a template for every single occasion that's going to take a thousand hours of staff time. But I think there's some good examples out there, uh, in northern Colorado, southern Colorado, across the whole state of the kind of questions you should be considering when, when dealing with metro district. Because until today, I imagine that there's six of us sitting here that didn't know a whole lot about metro districts. Then we know a lot more about it now, but again, does that give us enough ammunition to go out there and say, yes, that sounds great, or no, that doesn't sound great? You know, I, when we first had these discussions, I sent, um, Ms. Garcia some information of a, of a, a well-respected attorney who does metro districts and also a financial advisor who evaluates service plans and, 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 uh, those performers that, that the development community is putting together. You know, because, and we've used them before to deal with a metro district service amendment, which quite frankly, I wish we had had that kind of level of, of support and evaluation when that service agreement was initially approved. Now a lot of changed in those 27 years, but, um, of start up to an amendment. But I, I like a little caution. That's, that's all I'm saying is I'm still trying to keep an open mind, but a little bit of a caution.
Are you talking about the policy framework?
Yeah, the policy, not a policy framework, but a, but just kind of a, uh, yeah, I guess you can call it a policy framework lapse, lack of, uh, additional, uh, uh, term to call that. But, um, I do believe that we, we need a little bit more information. And not necessarily to use this as a particular test case, because if we test it wrong and we get it wrong, then that's going to be a problem. So I'd rather have a little bit of information about lessons learned from other communities. Before we start saying, okay, here's a service agreement, yes or no?
So we would, we would always hire outside counsel. We would not, Mr. O'Leary would be representing the developers. I do have the contact information. I just checked my phone while we were in these discussions to make sure I had both of those individuals contacts and things like that. So this is if the, the direction is wanting more information about lessons learned from other communities, pros and cons, is that what, is that what the entire board is looking for? Or do you want us to move forward with trying to create a service plan template and things like that? What, I, I initially heard from the board that they were looking for the service plan templates, but now trustee Cannon has come up with some other options. So I would like some direction, please.
Okay. So we're just going to go down the line. Where are you at, trustee Moore?
I went to the bathroom at a really bad time. I of course want more information on all of the things that we've listed, um, tonight, just the possibilities. And then I do think it would be smart if this is something that we want to do. I mean, if we're going to consider doing it for this project, we should have a, a framework in place at some point for all of the future ones that may come before this board in whatever form it is. So whether that's developed simultaneously as creating an agreement for this project or not, I mean, we can decide. In my head, it seems like if you're working on one, working on the other kind of kills two birds with one stone time wise, but I could be completely wrong. Well.
On the service plan side of it?
It makes sense to me to develop one while we're doing this one. But also we need more information.
Clear enough for, from her?
Using my own, own words to paraphrase, it's consider both simultaneous. Take copious notes to be used for policy considerations, but don't let that slow down the other considerations on a specific request. Trying to bring them both forward.
All right. Trusty Wigan, where are you at?
Yeah, I agree with just what he said there. Uh, we do need to know some of the pros and cons from the other communities, the successes, the failures, uh, and kind of work that in with what we're looking at here too. So I think that should be part of the policy framework.
Trusty Daly?
I say that we use this as an example and my, I trust that we will seek every best practice, every option, everything that is common practice or not, just to make sure that we're doing the best agreement possible. So, um, I, I say we do it for a specific example, but make sure that we cover all of our bases and that.
Okay. Okay. Paper Tim?
I apologize. I should definitely not have used the verbiage test case. Uh, let's, let's be very clear. Obviously everybody here on this board wants additional information about this topic. I think that, uh, if we do want to go down this, uh, with Sage, you know, obvi, this, this, this provides us a springboard to create the framework. So yes, I'm very much saying that these things kind of be developed in, in, uh, you know, you, you know, alongside each other. But the bigger point is that I don't want to, what, what I'm afraid of is staff like front loading a whole boatload, boatload of time to create a framework to then get to the Sage discussion. Uh, what I would want to see is us do those things in parallel. I think we're going to very much figure out what questions need to be asked and, you know, add those to a framework when, when that time comes. But I, I just, I don't see the, I, I just would be hesitant to have us front load that and have stuff, have stuff create the framework first. It makes more sense that we would just do all those things in parallel. So.
Okay. So all of you are in line. Okay. Trusty Cannon?
Well, I pretty much stated my case, but, but I do want to add one more thing that, that, um, I don't want to learn by doing. And, and I'm probably the only one here who has direct experience with working with service plans in metro districts. So those lessons learned, I don't think it's going to take a lot of state, uh, a lot of, a lot of staff time. The fact that we are going to are outside counsel and I would hope that we also hire outside financial analysts to evaluate the service plan, they're going to ask a lot of those questions that we might miss anyway. Even, even if we have, you know, best practices, certs and so forth like that. But, but, um, I just, I don't want us to make a decision on, on a metro district without having more information. And I do want to see what the service plan looks like. I want to have some robust discussions about that. And I'd like to see outside counsel review that service plan and financial analysis on that, um, to accompany our review as well. So thank you.
Trusty Teets?
I'm, like I said previously, I'm fine moving forward with metro district and exploring. I don't want to front load the policy framework simply because as it was stressed here, if we do find out things from reviewing the contract, having outside legal counsel and financial advisors, that itself will help frame that policy framework down the road, I assume. It'll keep us from making errors and issues in our first contract because that oversight will come with our review as well. And then moving forward, I think it will help develop a pretty decent framework if one needs to be. I still am moved at the fact that these are very different beasts of their own entity. Every single one's going to be different and I'd hate to see town staff waste a massive. Every single one's going to be different and I'd hate to see town staff waste a massive amount of time on something that might be very different every single time. So I'm in full support of moving forward with items that were discussed, making sure that we're looking at the affordability and generalized idea of the AMI included in those discussions. I am in full support of also having outside counsel and the financial. If that does come to the fruition with moving with this metro district. But as it sits, I, I would love to know more and I want to do know the pros and cons moving forward with it as well. So I don't, however you can take that of.
Okay. Thank you. And then, yeah, I'm all for further discussion. And then when it comes to the broader framework or having something set up for this one or for multiple or whatever the case may be, I'm definitely a fan of doing this and then taking that and, you know, cloning it down the road or making adjustments as we see fit per other developments if or when the time comes. Okay. Good direction?
Yep. The last question was, what other questions do you have? But I've been taking copious notes and I know others have too. So I feel like that's answered unless you had anything specific you want us to bring back.
No, we don't.
No, I think it could do.
No, we don't. It, it'll be, it'll be like.
Maybe.
January, February. Yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be here by J.
No, no, we'll, we'll have some more information for you, probably the next 30 to 60 days. We'll get through the holidays. We can do some research in the meantime and hopefully bring something back for you. Just, you know, maybe in bits and pieces, Cody and I'll get together and kind of talk about what that, what that looks like. The steps perhaps, and you know, what phases we might bring information to you all too, so that we, the hope, I mean, but the hope to get things to you as quickly as possible, of course, not to delay. But you know, needing opportunity to completely vet the information, get in contact with additional personnel, things like that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all the information.
Appreciate it.